Good morning, everyone. We got, uh...
What's that?
Internet. I think we're good. You have to be.
I'm good.
All right. So, uh, good morning, everyone, for the June 10th, 2025, regular Board of Supervisors meeting. We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order here, and we'll start off with a moment of silence. Does anybody have Supervisor Sabatier? You wanna go ahead and start off?
Uh, so an unfortunate event occurred over the weekend. The majority of the community has, uh, come to be aware of this. Unfortunately, a, during a summer trip outing to Hidden Valley Lake, a fourteen-year-old who resides in the city of Clear Lake, Andrew Roberts, um, went missing and eventually was found drowned and deceased. Uh, I don't wanna go into any specific details. Um, there's still more investigation going to, uh, get more information. But this has been huge for Canockta Unified School District. Uh, he was at my wife's school. Uh, her staff is, um, going through a lot of difficult times right now. Uh, a lot of his friends and his classmates are going through some difficult times, and I think it was shocking as a whole to the entire community, uh, that this has happened to a young individual, uh, just doing what we all do every single day, trying to enjoy our lives and have a wonderful day in summer when it's hot out there. Um, so please think of Andrew Roberts today, um, think of his family and all the people that has impacted him, and very thankful for those, uh, that went out to search and rescue, uh, looking for him. Um, this was a, uh, countywide effort to try and find him, and unfortunately, the worst possible outcome, uh, is the outcome of this. But, uh, I'd like to think of Andrew Roberts today for a moment of silence.
Chief Duncan, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did I have him do it last time? I don't remember if I had him do it last time. Did I have him do it last time? I don't remember. I did. Oops. Sorry about that, chief. All right. So, uh, we have item four, consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda. Do we have any of those? We do?
No, we do not.
Okay. You shook your head yes. So I was like, oh, goodness. Consent agenda. Um, we'll move on to item five, which is the consent agenda, and, uh, as you know, consent agenda items are usually non-controversial. We usually pass them in one swoop, one vote. However, if, uh, there is a further discussion that anyone wants to have from the board, they can pull it, and so can anyone from the public. And it looks like I have three already, 5.4, 5.6, and 5.11 that need to be pulled. Are there any others? All right. So I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone that'd like to pull an item from the consent agenda? No hands in Zoom. All right. I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, move to approve the consent agenda as proposed with the exceptions of 5.4, 5.6, and 5.11.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Five zero zero. We will now move on to our timed items. Uh, next is public input, 6.1. Uh, public input. You can come up and discuss anything that's not on the agenda. Just know that, uh, the board will not be able to address it. However, we will after or during or some, somewhere after the meeting, get you in touch with the department or, or supervisor in the district. So if you have public input, please come up to the front, state your name for the record, and we'll give you three minutes.
Chairman Crandall, supervisors, uh, I was here last week and presented a concern, uh, concerning the watershed official survey, uh, that was, that was put out. Uh, I asked three questions. I sent an email out following that with the documents for your convenience so you could take a look at them. Um, I asked a question, did the supervisors know of this survey? How much did we pay, uh, for S A S C I consulting for this survey? And, uh, who approved the effort? I have since found some information that, uh, it looks like it was approved by the board in 2023, uh, to do some kind of survey like this. Uh, I can't believe in reading the survey that the board would have approved what the survey is. Uh, so I received no feedback except here recently about that. At some point in time, I would appreciate, uh, us having a frank discussion about this. Transparency is critical for this kind of issue. Uh, since then, since last week, I've been approached by, uh, several citizens of Lake County, uh, some who received the official survey and some who had heard about it from others. Straight to the point, there is a concern about being deceived by the board because of this survey. Uh, some have received, or excuse me, uh, uh, some have said that this is a ploy to shield the board from, uh, involvement in raising taxes. Uh, there are questions that this has happened before, uh, has this happened before? In other words, is this a standard practice of the board, uh, to run this kind of, uh, propaganda in trying to raise our taxes? I do not entertain such conspiracy theories. I don't entertain these conspiracy theories, but without an honest discussion with the board, uh, it is not possible to determine the truth without performing an audit of the budget, the actuals for the budget, and then performing an efficiency, uh, review. I did this for many, many years with, uh, some pretty big companies. Uh, the federal government calls this a doge. We now have a group assembling, uh, that has the intent to perform these audits and, uh, and report back our findings. Uh, I thank you for what you guys do here. You don't have an easy job. Uh, you got a lot of rabble-rousers. You got people that aren't happy. You make decisions that fifty percent of the people aren't happy. Uh, but I encourage you to be transparent with what you're doing. Transparency is critical. Uh, so I thank you, and, uh, I look forward to, at some point in time, having a discussion with the board concerned this.
Oh, yes, sir. I know you, we got your name last week, but if you can let us know your name for the record.
Patrick Rigel.
Patrick Rigel.
Four zero eight, eight zero seven, four nine seven three.
Four zero eight.
Thank you.
Good morning, Tom Lasik. Um, this is, uh, an issue that is not on the agenda for the Board of Supervisors, but it is on the agenda for the Planning Commission, which is in two days. Um, if you recall, back March 18th, uh, this board, when it was discussing the Cannabis Ordinance Task Force, um, all of the, uh, board members requested, all of the board members requested that, uh, um, you, you can't outdo a pet when it comes to stuff like this, but, um, uh, requested to see the information first before it went to the Planning Commission. Um, I think Supervisor Sabatier first brought it up. According to the transcript that I reviewed, Supervisor Pyska said she would also like to see the summary beforehand. Uh, Ms. Owen also said yes, and, uh, Vice Chair Raspeyson said he would also like to see the information beforehand, and, um, Chair Crandall, uh, reiterated that and confirmed that, um, the board received a formal consensus that they would like to see that information come before the board, before it went to the Planning Commission. Also, in the transcript, Director Turner said she could do that, that it was a good idea and it made sense. Um, however, it is on the agenda for Thursday, and I do not believe the board has yet seen it, and I'm respectfully requesting that, um, somehow the board or C D D asks to have that pushed to a date time uncertain to allow the board to, um, see it as they originally requested. And then, um, also, just to note that, um, some of the things that were agreed to be put in the, the list, considerations from the public, um, still aren't there. So I think, I think in order to avoid conflict, it would be a good idea to follow the request that the board, uh, put forward back in March.
And that was for cannabis?
What's that?
That was for cannabis?
That was the Cannabis Ordinance Task Force update, um, March 18th. Um, around an hour and twelve minutes into the recording, you can see the discussion, and I think it was the right thing to do, and, uh, I think, I mean, it's been almost three years. Another week or two wouldn't hurt, and it would allow you all to see it the way you originally requested. Thank you very much.
Any other public input?
Good morning, Chair Crandall, supervisors. Margot Cambara, your board approved Vision 2028. A Vision 2028 priority is being disregarded, specifically maintaining transparent and fair government. At your board's March 18th meeting of this year, your board directed community development on, uh, Cannabis Ordinance Task Force recommendations. Your board instructed C D D to bring a summary of, um, task force recommendations to your board before input, before asking input from other board-appointed bodies. Despite agreement with, by, um, Community Development Director Turner, this action did not occur. On the Planning Commission meeting agenda for June 12th, two days from now, on the agenda is an item, quote, "Consideration of Summary Cannabis Policy Recommendations and Requests for Planning Commission Recommendation or Recommendations." And this is counter to your board's instructions to C D D. At the March 18th Cannabis Update, Director Turner told your board that the ordinance revisions would go to your board, the Lake County Ag Advisory Committee, and then to the Planning Commission. I respectfully request that your board take action to restore your board's direction to Community Development Department concerning the Cannabis Ordinance recommendations. Please have the recommendations go to your board as instructed before going to the Ag Advisory Committee, before going to the P C, the Planning Commission. At present, it's premature for the Planning Commission to weigh in on the Cannabis Ordinance. Community concerns have not been addressed. If the only avenue of public comment on the Cannabis Ordinance is in three-minute increments per community member before the Planning Commission, Ag Advisory Committee, and your board, community concerns will not be adequately addressed. A serious public policy discussion cannot be conducted in three-minute increments. Not addressing community concerns is not fair and does not reflect transparent and fair government. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public input in the chambers? How about on Zoom? Sam, can you make Johanna a co-host so she can unmute whoever's on Zoom that wants to speak for public input? All right. If you can, uh, state your name for the record.
Good morning. This is Omar Afifi with Three D Built. Start three minutes. Uh, so, uh, my name is Omar Afifi. I'm a developer and, uh, I own a construction and a construction management firm. Uh, one of the former employees, uh, with Caltrans was the local government oversight, told me about your county to go do some of the development, uh, senior citizens, senior housing, uh, in, in different counties, in rural counties. So I thought I, I consider Lake County. So first, I, I'd like to get to know everybody. So I, I submit, I submitted a construction management proposal for one of your, uh, firm, one of my, uh, three companies, not the construction, not the development. It's a C M firm. It's an engineering firm. I submitted a proposal, and one of your projects was due on March 10th. Uh, per the guidelines of the project, uh, the announcement was supposed to happen in April. I reached out to the Glenn March, who was responsible for this in April, uh, about two weeks after the deadline. Uh, he responded back to me a few days later that they're going through some internal issues. So, um, I waited, um, a couple of weeks, reached out to him. He never replied back. I reached out to him a month later. He still never replied back. I reached out a month and a half later, didn't reply back. So I got very frustrated, uh, with him not responding to my emails. I reached out to Susan Parker. I sent her an explanation that I followed the dates in the outline in the RFP, and no response, and I gave her a list of the dates and everything, and instead she responded back by saying, "Thank you for sharing your experience and concerns." Like, it was a very condescending, nonchalant, "I don't really care what you, uh, this is your feelings," or something. "This is not my feelings. This is what happened. This is the dates. I gave you the dates. I gave you a complaint. You're supposed to go at least go investigate." I told her, "We work with federal agencies. Um, we work with, uh, cities, counties, and I was wondering, when I was looking into development into different counties, you have one of the most beautiful counties in the state for development, for investment, for money, for companies to, to, to move there and establish presence. However, if they're gonna deal with county officials like Susan Parker, like Glenn March, who ignore people, this county will never grow to the potential. I think you're as pretty as, you have a county as pretty as San Diego County, but you're, you're not, uh, experiencing the full potential of this county because you have public officials like this. I hope this doesn't continue. I hope this changes, and thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Any other hands in Zoom? All right. With that, we'll close public input. We'll move on to our next item, which is 6.2, Pet of the Week.
Good morning. Um, Animal Control Officer Palio with Lake County Animal Control. And today we have Bandit with us. He's approximately four years old, American bully terrier mix. He, he's ready to go home. Um, he's been with us for about twenty-five days. Um, he's actually very good with other people, other dogs, from what we've been able to experience. We also wanted to give thanks to the community for coming together on Saturday for our, uh, Free Adoption Day. We came out with a total of twenty-seven dogs and cats being adopted, um, which we actually still have some left over. If anybody would like to come down and take a look at some, they are reduced cost thanks to the S P C A already taking care of some of their spays and neuters. Um, so yeah, we are located at 4949 Hellbush Drive in Lakeport, and you could always reach us at 707-263-0278. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much, and thank you for the update on the adoptions as well.
Of course. How can I say?
Stop it. They're trying to, they're trying to convince me to do it. It does look like my old dog Chloe, so anyhow, next on the agenda, we have our 6.3, uh, Consideration of Presentation by California State Association of Counties. This is sponsored by Supervisor Pyska and Sabatier, and we have Graham Naus here that will come up, and you can actually come up here.
Get comfortable.
Yeah.
I don't need a leash.
Probably a shock collar.
With a prong collar, too, either one? If you two wanna say anything to start out?
Go ahead.
Um, so CSAC reached out. Uh, they are going to different counties, uh, currently doing a little bit of a tour. Uh, we actually were honored to have, uh, them take a tour of Lake County not too long ago. Unfortunately, Graham was not able to be part of that cohort, but, uh, we had Chastity, we had, um, Bruce Gibson, the current president at that time, Michael Sweet and others that showed up to check out what we were doing. Uh, today is really just, uh, information on what CSAC is working on. There's a lot going on at the state level. Uh, we appreciate the advocacy that CSAC does for us. I know that Supervisor Pyska and I are part of the committees that are, uh, part of CSAC, uh, but all of us on this board can take part of CSAC anytime. There's not a minimum number or maximum number of, uh, supervisors that can take part, and I hope that we can kind of touch on some of, uh, how our, um, a- after the information you wanna provide for us. If we can also touch on how our staff and all supervisors can engage with, uh, CSAC, uh, the better the engagement, the better the outcomes. So pass it on to either Supervisor Pyska or Graham Canaus.
Great. Uh, good morning.
Good morning.
Um, yeah, I was, um, uh, really disappointed not to be able to join the crew, um, as they were out here. Um, as someone that grew up in Humboldt and has driven up and down this corridor probably ten thousand times in, in my life, um, the contractor that spoke earlier is exactly right, which is this is an absolutely beautiful county, and driving in the morning, early in the summer, is flawless. Um, so delighted to be here. I wanna talk a little bit about CSAC, what we do, um, and also to really celebrate the presence that Lake County has outside of your borders, but in pushing forward your community, um, because, um, it's a lot. Um, and it's a lot with Supervisor Sabatier on our board and Supervisor Pyska, um, who serves as the alternate, but also, we have five policy committees at CSAC that cover all the scope of services that counties provide, and two of those five are chaired by Lake County supervisors. So, five committees, there are two hundred ninety-six supervisors in California, and two of those five committees are chaired by members of this board. Um, that is where our legislative platform is created, and so that's our bread and butter about, relative to what we are doing on behalf of counties all across the state, and that's awesome. Um, so Supervisor Sabatier serves as the Chair of our Administration of Justice, uh, Policy Committee, and I'll talk a little bit about some of those issues in, in a moment. And Supervisor Pyska serves as the Chair of our Ag Environment and Natural Resources Committee, um, which, um, includes our disaster portfolio, wire wildfires and other natural disasters, which this county knows all too well, um, and so I'll chat a little bit about that as well. Um, Lake County's a hundred sixty-four years old. CSAC is not quite there, but we are one hundred thirty years old. We are the second oldest county association in the country, and we do today what we started doing a hundred and thirty years ago, which is to lift up communities and ensure that your voice is heard at the state Capitol and in Washington, D.C. And the reason for that is because all those priorities that are adopted by the state and the federal governments, they don't get done until counties do something. Um, there's not, um, public safety in your community until the county does something. There's not a criminal justice system until the county does something. There aren't elections until the county does something. There aren't health and human services provided in the community until the county does something. Um, and on and on. There's so much, um, of an integral role that the county has in communities that is often dictated by the federal and state governments, but it can't be done unless you have the resources, the authority, and the flexibility to do it in a way that makes sense in your community, and that's what we seek to do, um, each and every day. Um, and, uh, I'll share a little bit about what those priorities are in, um, in just a moment. In addition to our core advocacy, we have two other parts of our operation that are relevant. One, we have a business arm that focuses on value-added, um, business services that help support county government, or county, excuse me, county operations, or that provide direct services to, uh, residents in your community where it makes sense, like property tax payment, for example. Um, our newest, um, endeavor, um, came out of Del Norte County, and that is to serve as the, um, property agent, um, the realtor for, um, transactions that counties may not have internal capacity to carry out. Um, and so we are doing that with Del Norte County, and we're working on that with Glen County as well, and others, um, in the space where you may not have the internal capacity in order to manage your portfolio of properties or in seeking out additional properties, for example, if you need a behavioral health treatment center or whatever it may be. Um, and so if it makes sense, then we're happy to assist in, in navigating through that. Um, and if you can do it internally, all the better. Um, please go forward and do great work on behalf of your county. Um, so wanted to reference that. Um, we are at a very interesting time, um, in terms of what's occurring in the legislature. The initial, um, deadline for bills to move from their first house over to the second was just last week. Um, there is, uh, one area that is still not settled, um, that is relevant to Lake County, and that is a bill that impacts the carrier of last resort. We are heavily involved in advocacy around that to ensure that nothing happens in communities that doesn't preserve access to critical connectivity. Um, and that is highly relevant in a number of parts of this county and in a number of your, um, colleagues across the state, and we wanna make sure that, um, there is only, um, forward movement in spaces where your community has alternatives, um, and, um, that we can ensure those, um, ingrained in state law or through the Public Utilities Commission. So we're very actively engaged, um, around that issue. Um, relative to the state budget, there was a legislative agreement that was announced late yesterday, uh, between the Assembly and the Senate. Um, that is not in agreement with the governor, and so currently there is a budget proposal from the governor, and there's a counterproposal from the legislature, which they will vote on between now and Sunday, uh, to meet their constitutional deadline. Um, there are a couple of, couple of items in there that are very important. One deals with Proposition 36, um, which the voters overwhelmingly passed to change the criminal justice system, um, somewhat, um, and add a, um, a real tool related to, uh, substance use diversion, um, so that folks, um, could have treatment when it is necessary. Uh, in order for that to occur, um, you have to have funding in order to carry it out. And so that requires investment in behavioral health, investment in probation, investment in the district attorney, investment in the public defender, all of whom have, um, new responsibilities under the proposition. Um, in the most recent proposal from the governor, that was proposed to not be funded at all, um, and it turns out you cannot deliver services for free. And so when the population, sixty-eight percent of the voters say, uh, Proposition 36 is a top state-level priority, we believe that the state should then fund it. It's the only way you can actually do it. Um, and so we continue to push on that. Um, there, in the legislative agreement, there is a modest amount of funding. It's, it's shy, just shy of a hundred million dollars. That is nowhere near what is needed in, in order to successfully carry it out. So our advocacy will continue on, uh, on that front. Um, the other piece that is relevant, um, to mention here is around homelessness. We've been very active around homelessness in both urban and rural areas, um, for a few years now. Um, there is a, um, a program. It is the most successful homelessness program in California. It is called the HAP program, and I'm not gonna articulate the acronym because every time I do, I get a call from my team that I got one of the words wrong. So I'm just gonna say it's a homelessness-related program that has a fair amount of flexibility, um, but unfortunately has only been funded on a one-year-at-a-time basis, which means you cannot make multi-year investments to truly address homelessness in your community. You're almost required to spend the money inefficiently in the way that it is structured, and so we're, we're pushing back on that. There are dollars in the budget agreement for this, uh, about a half a billion. Um, it has been a billion dollars a year, and so what is currently on the table is half of what has been in place for the past few years. Um, and so that, we have some concerns around having the same expectations of what is happening, or higher expectations in terms of what is happening around homelessness, um, and yet half the funding in order to make that happen. Um, we also continue to believe that until the state, um, clearly articulates who's actually supposed to do what level of work around homelessness, um, then there's gonna be more spinning than is necessary, and a lot of, um, folks looking at others who haven't done as good of a job as they could have, although no one actually has clear responsibilities. And so it is, um, almost mind-boggling that as it relates to homelessness, it is the only policy area in California's one hundred seventy-five-year history where there's absolutely nothing in state law that says who's supposed to do what. It's the only one. So child welfare, criminal justice, K-12 education, transportation, whatever, in every other policy area, there's some set of rules about what we're trying to accomplish, who does the work, and what tools and, and, and dollars do they have in order to carry those out, except for homelessness. So we shouldn't be surprised when we're, there's not more progress being made because there's not clarity in terms of what that work is, and there's clearly not an ongoing, um, investment in order to make progress in communities. So that's, that's a critical issue. Um, and then I mentioned disasters earlier. Um, we have created a, uh, comprehensive disaster proposal. We have created a comprehensive disaster proposal that in many respects comes out of much of the frustration and experience and learning and leading that has occurred in this county. Supervisor Pyska has been very heavily involved in those efforts with us, and they also learn on, from what has been occurring in Los Angeles relative to their fires. Things like when a substantial disaster hits a community, there should automatically be a number of things put in place. Property tax exemptions for impacted homeowners and businesses, a backfill of those to the county who is attempting to try to rebuild in those communities, expedited debris removal so it doesn't take two to four years to remove debris, which becomes a new fire hazard, and instead it can be done in under six months. So there's some things that we think should happen automatically the moment that there is a declared disaster, as opposed to each of those that you have to fight for in the legislature for funding or with the governor's office to get emergency authority. And we believe that whole structure and many other things should be put in state law so that there's no question in communities about what's going to happen, and you can invest your resources in working with your community to lift it up. So we continue to work on that as we're moving ahead. So that's a critical area of focus for us. Ultimately, we do as y'all direct us to do, because I'm fortunate to have 296 bosses and five of them are here, and so I'm very thankful of that. You've all been engaged with us in one way or another, and that is really impactful. And Supervisor Spatier, it goes to your point, which is the more engaged you are with us, the more responsive we can be on your behalf, and the more that we can leverage the other 57 counties with you in order to make progress on behalf of your community. That's our purpose. We're very, very fortunate to do that, and we have an immensely comparable staff in order to carry that out on your behalf. They were working around the clock the last several days. They will continue to do so, reading all the different details related to the budget and looking for ways in which we can move communities forward. And I'm just thankful for the opportunity to partner with you and would hand it back to the Chair for any dialogue that y'all may want to have after I answer the question that you posed Supervisor Spatier about how to engage. I would encourage supervisors, CAOs, county councils, department heads, and many others to reach out to us. You all are on the ground. You see what is happening in your community. You feel the frustrations that may occur on one policy issue or another. You experience the roadblocks to making more success in your community and moving things forward, and the more we understand what that is, the more effective we can be on your behalf, and that is critically important. That has been true in terms of the engagement with us, particularly for your board, but our staff is working with your staff frequently on a whole host of issues so that we understand when there's a policy that is being proposed at the state or federal level, what does that actually mean in your community? I should also mention that several members of this board are engaged nationally as well in a variety of different areas. There are two vice chairs of the National Association of Counties of their committee structure that are in this room, and Supervisor Spatier also sits on the National Economic Mobility Network as one of a dozen or so folks across the country that has been engaged in that effort. It's just underscoring the importance of leveraging what you know in your community, what you hear from your community, and putting that on a national level to move a much larger organization forward on policy that benefits Lake County. And I wish all that could happen while you remained here in your county, but too often the only way to do that and to make substantial progress is to be physically in the room. It makes a huge, huge difference, and you know that because you all have been doing the work and really leveraging the great strengths of this county and putting them to use, both in our organization and in the national one as well. So just a huge thank you for that because it makes all of us better when you engage in that manner. With that, Mr. Chair, delighted to hand it back over to you and take any questions, comments, or course corrections as they may be.
No corrections. Thank you so much. I think the other aspect that I think is very important when it comes to CSAC is, you know, I do attend the RCRC, but those are all rural, they're rural, it's rural-based. So when I go to the CSAC, there's been a couple of engagements that I've had with other supervisors that have municipal advisory committees at a different level and have went through experience with some of them, and so they've been able to give me some advice on how to deal with some of that and how they've went through some of the hurdles because my municipal advisory committees are recent. 2017 is when they were, you know, when they started out. So to be able to talk to some supervisors from different counties and urban areas as well, or just, you know, bigger, however, you know, they have municipal advisory committees, and so networking and getting other, you know, advice from other supervisors is really important, aside from the legislative piece. I know that's very important, and I look at and look out for your updates as well. So just wanted to add that aspect to it.
Go ahead. Supervisor Spatier.
Thank you very much. I think that, if you don't mind my saying, you haven't highlighted your staff enough. We may sit in specific capacities within our committees, but I know from my perspective, Ryan and Michaela have been instrumental in making anything happen within the committee I'm a part of, and their knowledge and their understanding of what's happening currently in Sacramento is second to none. And so I appreciate being able to pick up the phone, email them, and get information and get the true status of where we are. It's huge help to be able to have that kind of relationship and that kind of knowledge that I can grab onto anytime. I want to speak a little bit to the homelessness part. Without getting into the big scope of everything, there's a lot of pressures coming from a lot of different directions, and what we're seeing, and I believe it's statewide and it's definitely happening in this county, is our seniors being impacted the most at this moment, and that's what we're seeing in our biggest growth in our homeless population is those that are 55-plus. With the cost of living going up, all the changes potentially happening to our healthcare system and the other support services that Medi-Cal and Medicaid are attached to, those all give me pause and concern for the future of our seniors and how we're going to be able to take proper care of those who have already paid their dues by doing what they've done in their past. And I think, in my opinion, it comes down to one thing that we have been trying to really do, and I don't want to say we have failed, but it doesn't feel like we've turned the corner. And I know there's a lot of work being done around the state and a lot of work being done here in the county, but housing continues to be a problem, and the lack of housing is one of the biggest factors to push the cost of living continuously up and up and up due to supply and demand. We have to find ways to make it as simple as possible in the appropriate ways, but housing continues to be an issue on how we can resolve these. I can't spend my money to permanently house somebody when I don't have housing. And so I just want to bring it back to a foundational issue. Homelessness is a result of this foundational issue, and I still feel we have not turned the corner or provided enough guidance, CEQA, whatever, to really help all of us at every county, at every city, and every jurisdiction to be able to solve this problem. And so still hopeful and hoping, and hoping as well for the Prop 36 funds because that's a big one, at least from the committee I serve. Appreciate for the comments on the staff connection. I'd love for us to send a department head-wide email to show all of the different committees and all of the, and I probably should have done this before, but since we're talking about it, all of the committees and all the email contacts to those staff members. I've done that for specific department heads when the conversations resulted in, let me ask, actually let me connect you, but I think we should go ahead and do that and make sure that everybody understands who the contacts are and what their expertise and fields are so that we can allow them to make those connections. Other than that, I appreciate everything that I've learned and I've gained from being a part of the CSAC, and again, appreciate everybody that's there and the relationships and networking that occurs there.
Supervisor Spatier, if I may relate to your points about housing. There, at some point, this applies to homelessness too, but it begins with housing, as you said. At some point, we need to get out of our own way. There are so many well-intended policies and costs that have been put in place over decades that have driven the escalation of housing costs in California. And it both is a function of cost and it's also a function of time, where the amount of time that it takes, even for a project that is, that can pencil out and it's going to be workable for your community, it takes so long, sometimes they still fall apart. In this particular year, I am more optimistic than I ever have been around making progress there. There's an effort in the Assembly led by Assemblywoman Wicks, who's the Chair of Appropriations, where there are nearly 20 bills that are focused on streamlining housing. And on the Senate side, Senator Weiner has been a driving force in this issue area as well, and both on getting things out of the way that are, whose purpose has broadened so substantially that it no longer is connected to why it was there in the first place. And so there are more active efforts this year than I have ever seen that are less than bill titles and more about actually substantively making changes, and so that's very promising. On the more specific to homelessness, we've created a pilot that sort of intersects housing-related projects that are about the homeless, so shelters, transitional housing, permanent supportive housing in communities. And it is also in this same space. We've met with a bunch of folks that do the work locally. We've met with nonprofit developers. We've met with a number of legislators in both houses, primarily in the Senate, and will be putting this pilot in a bill that has just moved from the Senate to the Assembly here in the not-too-distant future. That is focused on making it more workable to have the facilities that you need in order to carry out services. So if supportive services are needed, you have to have facility in order to do that. You have to have staff in those facilities doing the work, and we're trying to address that. And we've made some progress, and we've made some progress, I think, for the first time ever where it's not just one part of government, it's counties in some cities together. And so that is unique, and we're trying to shake things loose a little bit so that you have more tools in your community. But it's relevant on housing broadly, and it's most certainly relevant specific to homelessness, so really appreciate your points.
And if I may just quickly follow up, appreciate all that. I do want to bring up something just real quick, put you on the spot. When we did have a visit from CSAC and your crew, we did talk about the lack of engagement with your grant program. I want to make sure that we, because we talked about negotiating, how can we get Lake County involved? The grant program would allow us to have an easier access to grants by going through that program. I want to get us back at the table to continue and negotiate, what does that look like and how can Lake County best utilize that grant program because we have not utilized it at this point?
Yeah, just for awareness for folks, it's the CSAC Grants Initiative. It's housed underneath our 501(c)(3) foundation. The whole purpose of that, which was driven by one of our past presidents from a rural county further north and to the east of you, and that was that often in rural counties, you do not have the, you do not have sufficient internal capacity to go after state and federal dollars that could be very valuable in your communities. Sometimes the strings are too great to make it worthwhile, and sometimes the strings are not too great, but if you don't have the capacity to pursue those dollars, then they don't come to your community, they're going to go somewhere else. And so there are a number of counties that are part of that. What we've learned is that's actually also a suburban and urban county problem too. And so there are a variety of counties up and down California that have begun to connect up with that grants program to try to bring dollars into their community and perhaps to create more of a strategic approach to which grants in what areas to support which overarching board priorities that you've already set. And so we're working with a number of counties on that front too. So it's a great fit in some places, and in other places, folks have the capacity internally, and if you have it, you should use it. But if we can be helpful, then we're happy to do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Pyska.
Well, you didn't talk about the education piece, and we have our certificates, and I have found the ongoing education incredibly valuable. And I know we have, these two are in the New Supervisors Institute, which is phenomenal, although when we did it in COVID, it was different, but still very, very valuable. So I just encourage everyone to keep taking those classes because they really, they give us more tools, and I really appreciated that long course in the fall. I can't remember what it was called, but it was four or five sessions, and building on that was really helpful, is going to be helpful because I know there's another series coming up this fall. The collaboration beyond CSAC is another place that I see incredible value. There's collaboration with RCRC, with our PG&E meetings that we've had over the years. When I first started noticing our tree mortality disaster, which started in 2021, and then we worked on it really hard in 2022, and we're still waiting for a lot of those fruits to bear, but our past CAO said, you need to call CSAC, and that was my first engagement, and that was like a helpline. And then immediately, I had all of this support, started working with Catherine, started building a coalition, started building a coalition with other supervisors. And then Paragon came in, so we started building our relationship with them, which now represents us, and then they had this history with us, even though they've just started in January with us, we have a history that we've been working together for years. We've developed these relationships, and that has put us on the ground running faster than I ever thought. So out of all of these things have come the Insurance Working Group, those tight relationships with other supervisors when we meet in DC, and then we can walk the halls together, and then we put all of our experiences uplifted together so that we have a stronger voice because right now the county voice is more important than it has been, I think, at least in my five years, at the federal level of showing what these decisions, how these decisions are impacting us down here, and particularly with the Intergovernmental Disaster Reform Task Force and choices that may or may not be made with FEMA and the mitigation work that we have to rely on for the future of our counties. So your willingness and your staff's willingness to reach out beyond your organization is really paying dividends for us at the county, and I really, really appreciate that.
You're welcome Supervisor Pyska, and also goes to Supervisor Crandall's point. We work very closely with RCRC. My counterpart there and I have talked probably three times a day the last week, yeah. Pat's a good friend. We do a lot of work together. The two organizations do a lot of work together, and that's exactly what it should be because we're trying to accomplish the same thing, which is lift up counties and ensure that communities have what they need in order to be successful. But there are so many others that are out there as well. California's fortunate, California counties are fortunate right now where the National Association of Counties president is from here, Supervisor James Gore from Sonoma. That's really valuable. So the Intergovernmental Task Force on Disasters that you referenced Supervisor Pyska came out of his experience with fire here in California in his community and is informed by your work here and others also. That's really powerful because that's now setting a, that's driving national priorities for the, for a county-related organization. I'm hopeful that FEMA is translated, one, that it exists, and two, that there's a lot of learning and re-haul that is done in FEMA because it could be far more responsive, whether you are an impacted homeowner or business, or whether you are a governmental agency trying to figure out how do you bring your community back, and that there's greater clarity about what you should expect. And the number of what I would frame as no-brainer reimbursement claims that have been denied five years later after you've tapped your reserve to five years later, after you've tapped your reserve to fund it because you don't have a choice, is not acceptable, and that has to change. And the fronting of money that is required by every county and city that faces a disaster across the country is also not workable, and that is particularly true in rural communities. And so we've been pushing for that to change. We've also been pushing for the threshold of when you meet, where you meet the FEMA threshold is also changed, because it is based on a flat number of houses as opposed to a percentage of your housing stock. And a flat number of houses in a much larger community, it doesn't take that big of a natural disaster to get there. It's still awful, but it doesn't take the kind of scale that it takes here. And so you shouldn't be living in the same rules as a community that has 3 million people. And so that should be structured differently, and we continue to push on that. And those things come from here. They come from the work that you've done, Supervisor Pyska. They come from just the conversations that we've had with members of your board, with your staff, with Mendocino County that has experienced significant issues, Sonoma that's experienced significant issues, Ventura, where I'm going tomorrow, that has experienced significant issues in this area. That's where it comes from. And we now have an opportunity to both drive that here in California, but also to try to do so nationally, because change is needed. And that's, that isn't political. We don't sit on the political spectrum at all. We just want communities to have the resources, the authority, and the flexibility to do things in a way that makes sense to them. And that is different here than it is in other communities, and that's okay. We celebrate that. Your community's different. And so to us, it's fairly simple. It's just not always easy to convince the state and the federal government exactly what is best for the communities that they are overseeing.
I'm going to go ahead, oh, sorry, I didn't see you, Brad. Go ahead.
Yes, being a new supervisor, I'm, you know, just getting into this, but I just wanted to speak to the New Supervisor Institute, which I think has been very beneficial to assist, at least in my case, and I believe that's true for all new supervisors, with a good basis for kind of how county government operates. And we still have one more to go, so I'm looking forward to that one. But I just want to commend your staff that runs that as well. I think it's been excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome. It's a great program. Glad you're participating in it. Ditto for Supervisor Owens.
Yeah, thank you. It's been wonderful.
I'm going to open it up to the, oh, go ahead.
Oh, no, I was just going to say, there's so many projects that I'm working on, too, that I would love to make contact and see how it can help in some of the efforts that I have going that are on my agenda. So that would be amazing. Thank you.
Please, please reach out. I'm not going to say my cellphone in public, but there are a few members of your board that have it.
Okay, I'll get them up.
Yep, I'd be delighted to connect with you.
That'd be amazing. Thank you.
All right, I'll open it up to the public if there's anyone that would like to. There we go.
Good morning. Wendy Monfrans, Chief Probation Officer. And I'd like to thank CSAC for their partnership with our organization, the Chief Probation Officers of California. And I wanted to point out, related to Prop 36, the legislative budget agreement that they proposed yesterday ignores probation completely. And we urge CSAC and this board to fight for funding for all agencies that are working on the Prop 36 implementation, particularly in small counties. Probation takes the lead on these types of things, and that's what's happened here. We started work groups to implement it as soon as it passed. We brought together local law enforcement, the court, public defender, the district attorneys, behavioral health, and came up with a plan. And we looked at, we analyzed over the past few years what that impact would be on the county, and we've made it so that probation is the funnel, so that offenders that are charged this way are given all opportunities for assessment and treatment. And we are not being compensated for that if this goes forward. And we will do the work, and we'll figure out how to make it work, but it could have an impact on other things that go on in this county that we are responsible for every day, including holding people accountable, keeping the public safe, and making sure that all individuals that come into contact probation have everything they need. So I urge you to continue to fight for probation funding in Prop 36. Thank you.
It's a really good point. Our teams are working very closely together on that, on that very piece. And to underscore the point that your Chief Probation Officer just made, there's a $20 million cut to probation in the budget, followed by $15 million investment in Prop 36. So you can do that math. That's a negative number, and negative numbers don't allow you to do more. They do ensure that you do less, but that is not what the voters wanted, which is why we still have a lot of work to do to get that funding in the budget.
All right, any other public input?
Hi, Elaine Brown, and thank you for being here. I just want to speak on homelessness, and I've been in the system for a couple of years now and have talked to people on all levels, sat around tables with people like myself, and also talked to people who are the heads of charities. And what it appears to be, just from a teacher's standpoint, is that the state of California gives grants to many charities. So it's a lot of work to write grants in the first place, so a lot of energy goes towards writing grants. And they only get those grants if they're servicing people. I think it'd be great if they were given grants for how well they're able to put people back into society. I think that would be a more beneficial way of financing grants. I would really like to see the state of California not do that. It'd be like a public school, always having to do grants to keep going, and that's a lot of energy. So I was very blind to what goes on in this system until I fell into it, what's there, what kind of resources for someone like myself. They're really like $172 a month for three months, maybe, maybe, plus food stamps and insurance, which I'm very grateful for, but that's not sustainable, even for gas money to go from place to place. And the other thing that I found is allocated money. The places you go for services, like, say, Sonoma County has maybe 30 charities that you're going to, allocated money keeps them from being able to help someone if they need gas money to go down to see a mother or something of that sort that's in a different locality. It might take two days if you have an emergency to go somewhere, because everything's allocated. And really, sitting around tables with other homeless people, we aren't really clear on how money is spent and who gets what and how that happens. So I think it'd be really good to have fiscal, grant fiscal oversight, and also to the people that sign in when they go to these different places, that's how they get their grants, randomly pick people and see how they were serviced by those charities. Were they favorable? Did they really get what they were told they were going to get? Because often, I've heard people have done the work, they're told they're going to get money, and then it never materializes. So what happens to that money? I'd like to know. These are just some things. Also, there's some very good things out there. Redwood Empire is amazing. Another place that gets federal funding, or I guess county funding, is Abbot Kessy Wellness Center in Santa Rosa. Another one is one that's stemmed by mostly philanthropy, and that's the Living Room. I really think they should be looked at as models for the whole state. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just to highlight that on our website, for those that are interested in homelessness, on our website, there are two things that are relevant. First is, on this topic, and they're related to each other. The first is, we've created the most comprehensive framework to address homelessness in the country, and it's called At Home. There are six pillars to it and a ton of policy that's in there, and it maps out who should be responsible for what, so the public knows who to hold accountable for different components of it. So that's first. And then second, the pilot that I referenced earlier, that's also on there. And so there are links where folks can take a look at that and see what is being proposed. It is, we need to do something different. And there's opportunity, but it can't happen here. It needs to happen first at the state level, because they're the ones setting the rules. So we're trying to impact that to ensure that you have what you need in order to make progress.
Thank you. There's any other public input online or in the chambers? All right. All right. Supervisor Spatia.
Just a final words. I felt like you were, I'm giving you a hard time, felt like you were kind of sidestepping, saying the word sequel. I know it's a four-letter word, but it's okay to say that in the public. But that's, that's the big issue, that we need to have sequel reform. I do want to share appreciation, and I hope I don't put you too much on the spot, and I think it should go either way, no matter who is in our administration in our state. But I love the pushback that CSAC has been doing, because there are things that just don't make sense from the county perspective, and I appreciate that I'm seeing pushback coming from CSAC. And as far as Prop 36, you're right, $100 million. I believe we're asking for 350 or 400. It's not even close to what we're asking for, and so let's keep pushing for them, and let's see what we can get.
So shall it be.
Graham, thank you so much. One thing to add, though, is Pat is a taxpayer in Lake County. Just wanted to throw that out there.
There's opportunity there.
All right, well, thanks again for the, you know, the presentation. Definitely will be seeing you in Sacramento and whatnot. And again, thanks for coming out and giving us this information and showing what you do for our county and all the other counties.
Got it. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
All right. We're going to go ahead and take a five-minute break. I know we're behind, but I know we're going to get deep into some other things. So five-minute break, actually, we're going to come back at 10:10. There we go. You are welcome. All right. We're only three minutes over than the amount that I said, so we'll go ahead and move on to our next item. 6.4 Public hearing, consideration of proposed ordinance to designate fire hazard severity zones in the local responsibility areas and unincorporated lands of Lake County. It's continued from June 3, 2025. I know Maria Turner, CDD Director, is on Zoom, and we have Terry Logston and Jack Smalley here in the chambers to go ahead and present in chambers. So I don't know who I give the floor to. I think I'll just give it to Terry. Maria, okay. See, I.
Good morning. Maria Turner, Community Development Director. What you have before you today is a proposed first reading of a draft ordinance updating the fire hazard severity zones for our local responsibility areas. The Office of the State Fire Marshal is required to update these designations. And the maps that are attached to this draft ordinance reflect the changes in much of our county that is consistent with our current environmental conditions. These draft maps were put out for public review for a 90-day period, and we did collect input. So the maps were available for the public to review, both on the ready.lakcountyca.gov website, as well as in large formats, paper copies on the walls in the Community Development Department. We gathered this public input through email, but it was inadvertently omitted from last week's item. It has since been attached and was available for your consideration for this week. Additionally, supervisors had questions last week, specifically Supervisor Owen wanted to know how the changes in the designation of a fire hazard zone might affect development permits. And so I'm going to turn the mic over now to our Chief Climate Resiliency Officer and our Chief Building Official to answer that question and any other questions the board may have. Thank you.
There we go.
There it is.
Terry Logston, Chief Climate Resiliency Officer and Tribal Liaison. I would like to go over this quick presentation. Does that, does that work first? Okay. So as you know, the Board of Forestry and Fire Protection updated the LRA, Local Responsibility Area. I'm going to try very hard not to have acronym soup, but there's a lot of it. So they updated the maps of the fire hazard severity zone, and was received by the County Administrative Officer on February 10 in 2025. On February 12, the Lake County Community Risk Reduction Authority issued a press release to the public announcing the 90-day public comment period was open, and Community Development, as Director Turner mentioned, has received several comments, which are available to the public via the county's website. So what are the zones? Clear Lake, so the maps are required by these two government codes. They identify levels of fire hazard, and there's three different levels. Clear Lake and all water bodies were designated as moderate due to infrastructure such as docks and piers, boats, et cetera, that can catch fire. Your board may recall the damage during the sulfur fire of numerous shoreline structures, including docks, that were destroyed. And they want, the board wants to, the Board of Forestry and Fire Protection wants to be very clear that it identifies fire hazard, not risk. We can reduce risk, but we cannot reduce hazard, which includes topography, wind patterns, temperatures, et cetera. And so the zones are determined using the, they're modeling using the best available science and data, and they develop these hazard zones. And then the factors that are listed, the fire history, vegetation, flame length, blowing embers, proximity to wildland, terrain, and weather. For Lake County, fire brand production and transport modeling included what is locally called the Canacti Winds. We've all heard of the San Ana winds in Southern California. Of course, those are what drove the wildfires there this past January, devastating the communities. And to a lesser degree, we've heard of Diablo winds in the Bay Area around Mount Diablo. But here in Lake County, we experience what are called Canacti winds. And there's a really good explainer video that CAL FIRE LNU, the Lake, Sonoma Lake-Napa Unit, created a video, and it's posted to their YouTube channel called "Fire Prone Areas in the LNU." Why is that? And it was released last May.
Sure.
And if anybody is interested in those wind patterns, I do have those maps in my office.
I do love maps. So the fire hazard severity zone, wildland versus non-wildland zones. So the photo on this slide is in Scotts Valley, and I believe those parcels are a 40-acre minimum. There may be some that were subdivided, but primarily 40-acre minimum. And as you can see, several of them have all three zones, moderate, which is the yellow, actually, they have four zones, the non-wildland gray, moderate, high, and very high. So they explain that, how they determine them, and the gray is the valley floor, mostly agriculture. And then the zones are a minimum size of 200 acres and burn probability. Of course, here in Lake County, we're familiar with the number of wildfires just in this map is from 2018, excuse me, 2015 to 2020. It does not include the fires the last several years or before that, but they did utilize fire history from 1991 to 2020. And so we don't have, I don't think there's any, I couldn't find any purple on their maps. We don't have any designated urban fire hazard severity zones. This image is from the Sacramento area. But we do, I mean, there is a city of Clear Lake, and there is the city of Lakeport in some locations, some uses are considered urban, but apparently not for these maps. And then what is the map for? It's primarily for building standards for new construction. When, in the wildland urban interface, which is called the WUI, the map on the left is the adopted WUI map for Lake County that is in the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. And pretty much everywhere people live in Lake County is designated WUI, except very small areas in the Big Valley area, a little bit in Scotts Valley, and a little bit in the city of Clear Lake. But everything else in Lake County has been designated locally as WUI. It was reviewed and approved by the, this map was reviewed and approved by the Lake County Fire Chiefs Association on April 24, and it was incorporated into the CWPP, which was approved by your board and CAL FIRE on October 4, 2023. Definitions for all of the categories on this map, if you can see it, it says intermix, interface, from US Forest Service, and the same for CAL FIRE. Those definitions. Those definitions can be found in Appendix F of the Communities at Risk of the CWPP, which can be found on our website. You can just type in CWPP, and that will come up. And the state likes to stress, the map is not for insurance. Insurance Commissioner Laura issued a California Consumer Alert that says it's not. We all know that they do look at it, but they have much more extensive modeling that they use for hazards. So the Commissioner Laura's regulation was finalized in October of 2022. And it says that the insurance companies must provide discounts for wildfire safety actions such as community mitigation and home hardening, which these maps do not assess. So I continue working with the Lake County Fire Safe Council. Let's see, it doesn't really show up because of that bar. With the Lake County Fire Safe Council and others to get Lake County on what's called the Fire Risk Reduction Community List. The state of California maintains that list. They only open it every other year. It will open up in July, and we plan to get on that list. And so examples of, examples of the state minimum requirements in the SRA, which is State Responsibility Area. LRA is the Local Responsibility Area. And you can see the difference between what those zones and what is required, which I would let Director Turner or Jack speak to. I don't know the codes. But I think that this is a very helpful slide. And the slide that is included in the website, or to the board agenda right now, hasn't been updated. Isn't this exact one, so I will make sure that the slides are updated after the meeting. And again, that's just the timeline for adoption. And so before your board today is to decide to adopt the map as is or make any suggestions. As you know, they say we can't decrease the level of hazard zone. You can only increase it. In April, I attended the Lake County Fire Chiefs Association and had asked the question about, should we update, you know, if, if someone has multiple zones on their parcel, do we update it to the highest? Because I had understood that the city of Clear Lake was going to do that, because that's how you have to do it. Like Jack just described to me, if your parcel has two different flood zones, you have to build to the highest. But at the Fire Chiefs Meeting, it was explained to me that if you have multiple, if you site your house on an area that's moderate, you only have to build to those standards. You don't have to build to the very high. I asked this question about what we call split parcels to the contact that CAL FIRE gave me, what is his name? Battalion Chief of Land Use Planning Shane Galvez, who's based in Sacramento. I asked him that question, and basically he said CAL FIRE does not make recommendations on this topic because it is a local decision made in collaboration with local legal counsel. Although some jurisdictions are considering lowering or, and other jurisdictions are considering raising, that is up to your board. Thank you.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, I just want a clarification. You, you kind of danced around. But overall, just like the flood situation, when there's going to be development, it's going to be developed based on the highest severity zone that is within the parcel, not what area of the parcel are you building on.
Well, if you look at the examples of the state minimum requirements, the only difference in all of these is the hazard disclosure. So they all still have to be built to Chapter 7A or the Wildland Urban Interface, you know, and.
Well, not necessarily, because Kelseyville is not necessarily within the WUI. So certain ones will have higher levels of defensible space requirements. Certain ones will have other different requirements. It's not a huge variation of differences, but it's, my question is, it's still based on the highest severity zone within the parcel, correct?
That's, that's the way I personally would, would like to see it, you know? Because safety for life and limb and property is key. But like she was explaining with the flood zone, if your house, if you have two different flood zones, and your house is in the lower flood zone, that is what you would have to go with. Only if your house touches the higher flood zone. So, you know, this might be something that you guys, the board, would want to decide on this. Is if it's in a lower severity zone on a piece of property that has multiple severity zones, you know? Then that's what you can go with, you know? That's something that maybe that the board should discuss and recommend in the adoption process.
I appreciate the, the response, but I am getting conflicting information from some folks. I'm hearing that it's supposed to automatically go to the highest severity, and some folks saying you get it to choose. And so I'm, I'm a little confused as to what the actual regulation is that's coming down from the state based on this.
They didn't. Basically, they said it's up to you to decide. They will not, it's not in the legislation, and so it's up to your board and legal counsel to decide. It's, I think it's unfair to do that. It seems to me, when it comes to building standards, that it has to be very, very clear, and it's not. It's just not. And also, like, for instance, there's, what is it? It's 30 meters or 98.4 feet of, that can be off on the maps just because it's a satellite, you know, that is, is doing it from, from the earth. And if you look at, say, the Clear Lake Keys in Clear Lake Oaks, all of the houses in those keys should be designated as moderate because of the docks that are in the lake. But not all of them are. There's big swaths, and it's only because the channel is not 100 feet wide in some places. And so the map just doesn't show it.
With this, is there any flexibility? And I'm one that would rather go, for instance, I know I'm jumping around. When we bought our property, we owned a portion of Peter Creek, the land that Peter Creek goes over. So of course, a portion of our property was in flood zone. In order to, we already had a house built, but in order to get flood insurance, we had to go, even though our house was on a hill above Peter Creek Bridge, Hartman Bridge, we still had to go do documentation and do a survey, or what do you call that? It's a survey or whatever. Elevation survey to prove because of flood insurance, but because of a portion of our house was in the flood zone. And so for me, I'm more lenient, my belief is, to try to work. I try to work as hard as I can to make things possible for our constituents. Okay, to make it, make it as easy as possible on them, and the least expensive to make something work. So if you're in a fire zone and it's considered high on a portion of your property, what, is there the flexibility to improve it? Doesn't sound like it is by what you stated, but to have the fire department to sign off to say, you know what? There's been huge improvements in the property, therefore we can downgrade their, their status? No.
Yeah, that's the risk versus hazard thing. You can reduce risk, but you can't reduce the hazard. The problem is, is on these maps, when you get to the parcel level, it's, what's the word? It just doesn't have the granularity because of that 90-meter or 98-feet. It just doesn't fit. So some jurisdictions, the Chief Galvez told me, they're allowing, if it's a certain percentage of a parcel that is high, but the rest of it is moderate, to go with moderate. But then you open yourself up to liability.
Well, if you're building in the moderate area, though.
Right.
It should be.
That has, how, both cases have been explained to me, and I wish that I could make a recommendation that made sense. What most jurisdictions have done is just, I went and looked because everyone's having their hearings right now because everything has to be updated, and then the ordinance submitted by the 1st of July. They're just adopting as is. And unfortunately, then that leaves it gray areas for our planning departments.
Yeah, and to be honest, I still have concerns.
So, so just, just to be clear here. So the, the moderate area in the LRA is the only area that does not have to be built to 7A or the WUI standards. So, and that's probably like, probably like downtown Kelseyville or something like that, where it's probably urban unzoned. So I mean, that, you know, that's something we can think about. So I mean, almost every, almost every property in the LRA and SRA has to still be built to that ignition-resistant construction.
Sure, sure.
You know, so it's just a matter of the maps. And, you know, if you, if you do have that double zone on a piece of property, and you're, and you are building completely in, I mean, this is, this is a decision we have to make, you know, as a board, whether we want to go more stricter with this or less, or keep it the same. So if we went with that moderate instead of that high on that same piece of property, as long as it's completely in that moderate zone, you know, that's something that we could, that you, your board could adopt.
Do you have any idea, say, building, say, a 15 or 2,000-square-foot house? What would the savings be, moderate versus high?
Well, there wouldn't be any savings, because it still has to be built to Chapter 7A.
Okay, so it's not, there, there's no.
There's not going to be any savings.
So there's no effect?
No, the only, the only real effect is the hazard disclosure that goes with the high and very high zones. So it's just a hazard disclosure that would have to be.
Which, though, the insurance companies say they're not looking at, and you know they're going to.
Well.
The hazard disclosures is when you're selling the property.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Supervisor Pisca.
I'm in favor of, of just adopting as is today. We are in the middle of updating all of our plans, our safety element, our zoning. These are decisions that we can make as a county down the road in the next year or so as we move through this process. But these are not our maps.
No.
They're not ours. We can make changes internally as we see fit, but we don't have to make those decisions today. We can just adopt these maps and move down the road and work on what works best for Lake County on our timeline.
Yeah, as long as it's, you know, across the board and not less than.
Correct.
You know, and I, and I agree with that 100%.
Okay.
Supervisor Owen.
And I understand that. If we have no control over any of this, why do we need to vote on it to adopt it? Just curious.
Because it has to, because it's, it's, it's a state regulation that we adopt this ordinance. So there's an ordinance that was written that, that we need to adopt, put in place for this. So I mean, it's a state regulation.
So we really don't have any control?
No. We either have to adopt it the way it is or modify it to be more stringent and not less stringent. What, what, you know, but we still have to adopt an ordinance.
The more stringent, who does the work?
That's, that, that would be more like the, the dual zones on one property. You go with the higher zone, that would be more stringent. That would be something that we can adopt, you know? Or go with the moderate, you know, wherever your house is placed in those zones.
The legislation fact sheet that CAL FIRE has online says a local jurisdiction can increase the designation from one, from the, from the one identified by the State Fire Marshal. If a local agency decides to increase the designation of a fire hazard severity zone, it may do so if it does the following. One, if increasing the designation to very high, a local agency must make a finding supported by substantial evidence in the record that the requirements of Government Code Section 51182 are necessary for effective fire protection. And two, if increasing the designation to moderate or high, a local agency may do this at its direction. At its, yeah, at its discretion.
All right, I'm gonna, I don't see anything else, so I'm going to open it up to the public so we can have any dialogue on that end. If we have more questions up here, I'll bring it back. Go ahead. Come on up, sir.
Tom Lacy, I just have a question. Looking at the map of the entire Lake County, I know, I don't know how many parcels we have within the county, but what percentage of them are really in, in this transition between two different zones? I mean, are we having a debate about 5% of the parcels, 25% of the parcels? I mean, how problematic is this really?
And, and that's in the unincorporated areas?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I, I, it's just, it's a question. I know, I know it's problematic to try to come up with an answer because the probability that it's going to happen, it's going to happen at least once. But in the big scheme of things, most of it's red.
Yeah, we really don't have that kind of data with this. It wasn't even published with this.
Yeah, so, and as you mentioned, between very high and high, there's, it's a distinction without a difference practically. And then you just, so then the question is, well, what's the difference between, you know, something that's not labeled and, or moderate to the next level? And it doesn't look like there's that much of that anyway. So I mean, it's important discussion, but just how, how, how many parcels are we really talking about? And in the course of permitting and things like that in the course of a year? You know, is there something that could be handled on as a one-off until the ordinance is revisited? Thank you.
All right, any other public input? Come on up.
Morning, Mr. Chair, Board. Patrick Wright's Fire Chief, Lakeport Fire Protection District. I would encourage you to adopt this as presented as a state is, this is an unfunded mandate. I agree with Supervisor Pisca. We can figure out the local details later. You can only make it more stringent, not less. This is a 50-year map that they've already said cannot be revised. Now, we know that at some point in time in the future, that's going to change because it's unrealistic. Just look at the fires that we had down south in January and the large swaths of land that were impacted by that. And then they're saying that those are still going to stay in the very high severity areas. I'm just throwing that out as an example. That's a problem. When we do mitigation measures, whether it be through large burns or through other mains, you know, we're constantly getting grants through our different organizations in this county to go out and abate property, and the state's saying, we're not going to recognize what you do when it comes to these large tracks. And if we have a large fire, we're not going to recognize what has been done, the damage that has been done, or the fuels that have been mitigated through that large fire. So this map is, again, it's an unfunded mandate. It's very imprecise. When you look at just the 30 meters or 100 feet, plus or minus, when we know they can get down to within two feet, there's, there's a lot, a lot of problems with the science that went into this map, in my opinion. And since it is an unfunded mandate, my, and we cannot lessen the degree of severity on somebody's property, adopt it as is. And then when we start looking at the local impact and the ordinances on what we can do through our building code, our local building code, because there are measures that we can. You know, I know that if I'm in this flood zone, I can survey my property. And if I have enough room to move my house out of the flood zone, I don't have to be in a flood zone. And the same thing goes, even though this map is extremely imprecise, if I can move it into a moderate zone, build on my parcel in a moderate zone and not build on the, in the high or very high zones, that might be an option for me. And I would want the county to recognize that. So rather than put me all in the red or all in the orange, I might be able to build my house in the yellow, and I'd appreciate it if you leave my lot alone, if I have a split lot. As, that's just me personally, but as the Fire Chief of Lakeport Fire Protection District, I'm urging you, just vote this in. Don't waste any time, don't waste any money. We've got a lot of big issues to deal with. This isn't one. This is an unfunded mandate. Quit wasting time and money. Thank you for your time. Have a great day.
Thank you, Pat.
Good morning, Paul Duncan, CalFire. Just want to speak to the split lots. So, as clarification, and I made a call this morning, so same answer that you have, Terry, is that if it's split lots, they can develop on the lowest level. And then that is what that structure is considered. But I think, I agree with Patrick that we are looking at this as adoption, just because there's, this is a state-built map. We have no input on the, how the lots are calculated and what the risk is or what the hazard is. So, you're really stuck in, every one of these is a 7A construction, so it's already going to the highest level of structure. And as we saw down south, it doesn't matter what your level of structure is, you just, what we have to do is treat the landscape and we have to get the defensible space handled around the structures to prevent them from burning. So, really, it's a, on the, on the local level, that's what we need to do as far as this adoption. There's, we're just really stuck with the product that we have and being able to go to the higher level. But I think addressing the bigger elephant in the room is the insurance costs and those hazards and lowering those for our property owners. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board. Your Board may not be able to change or do anything else other than to adopt the fire hazard severity zones map. But as Supervisor Pyska pointed out, what we do with the maps and how we deal with the aftermath of adopting the maps is within our control. In a disaster, Lake County pulls together to keep everyone safe. Now, in a time without disaster, is a time to plan for everybody's safety. It takes all of us working together to keep us safe. Last month, your Board designated May as wildfire community prepared month in Lake County. The community must do its part. Similarly, the county needs to do its part to keep us all safe, specifically reviewing ordinances such as one, allowing the use of generators as standard operating procedures in high and very high severity areas. We're entering high fire season, and we hope that we can all see the end of the season safely and quietly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Margot. Just wanted to make sure, she didn't say her name, so, but we know her name, Margot Kimbura. All right, anybody else from the public? Anyone on Zoom? All right, so I'll bring it back to the Board for a quick, we're 10, 12 items behind, so a quick follow-up.
I, I wanted to just quickly share my screen because I am, just wanted to double-check on this. Let me see first. This is what's being posted. Is this accurate, that the red goes like this far deep into the lake? Or are we going to get an updated map? And this is, this is, it gets better as you go further in the water? I, I'm just wanting to make sure that this is the layer we're going to incorporate into our GIS, just like I could look up the flood zone, because it's not there yet. It's only specifically on the ready-go. I just wanted to make sure there's no changes. It is what it is.
This is the layer, the GIS files that we received from them on February 10th. My understanding is we adopt the maps with the ordinance as is. The state will then maintain them. My hope is that it will be better resolution on the State Office of the State Fire Marshal website. But you're right, that is exactly what I was talking about. I mean, it shouldn't be very high hazard into the lake.
And then we receive public input, and I think that public input is exactly the reason why we approved to move forward and write that letter. So, I'm looking forward to that letter so we can move that forward. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered.
Actually, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes.
Since this is an ordinance, it's a two-step process, and I could walk the Board through that if your Board's willing.
Yes, please.
And also as a side note, real quick, it's a typo. On the proposed ordinance itself, particularly on Section 4, there's a reference to the year 2023. My, the suggestion here is to revise that to state 2025 on Section 4. So, it would be the adoption for first reading of the ordinance as amended. And so, for your Board's consideration, the first motion would be to move to approve the first reading of the ordinance to be read in title only as amended. And then the clerk will read the title. That would be the first motion.
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You oppose?
I oppose.
Okay, so we, motion passes four to one.
Chair, I have a quick question. Should we have said as amended?
I mentioned.
Okay, okay, I apologize.
Okay. Go ahead, Johanna.
An ordinance of the County of Lake to designate fire hazard severity zones in the local responsibility areas in the unincorporated lands of Lake County.
All right. So, next, Deloitte.
So, the second motion would be to approve the draft ordinance as amended, move to approve the draft or, that the draft ordinance as amended be advanced to the next Board of Supervisors meeting, and it would be date and time certain for consideration and possible adoption. And the clerk may confirm the date and time certain for that? Or just the date? Not much of a choice. Has to be done by 6:30.
9:10 next week?
And, yeah, so it can be placed just at a date certain because it can be placed on the consent agenda, so just June 17th if, unless.
I, I. Just put it as a non-time.
Yeah, with the no vote that we have, I think it's probably useless to put it on the consent agenda unless she doesn't want to record her no vote on the second vote. It's up to Supervisor Owen.
Or, or just time it, yeah. 9:10 is fine.
What's the motion again?
To put it on the agenda for, go ahead.
Are you going to, what's the? Can you read the motion?
Yes, so the motion would be to approve that the draft ordinance as amended be advanced to the next Board of Supervisors meeting, date and time certain. That will be June 17 at 9:10 a.m. for consideration and possible adoption.
So moved.
A second. So, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 500. Anything else? That's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Maria. All right, so we will, thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
And thank you, Terry. Okay, keep going, all right. So, we'll move on to our 6.5 sitting as the Lake County Air Quality Management District Board of Directors Workshop and Hearing for the Draft Replacement Fee Schedule, Rules 660 through 662, and Updates to District Rules 208.2, 226.5, 433.5, 1002, and 1105, and Repeal of District Rules 631, 12.450, and 12.640. And we have Doug Gierhart. Go ahead, Doug.
There we go. Good morning. So, this, this is a workshop to discuss the proposed rule amendments and new fee rule that we've been working on for quite a while now. We'll kind of go through the, you know, this is a process that's required by Health and Safety Code. It's been legally noticed. It's, you know, an out for public comment. We have not received any comment at this point. So, hopefully, we'll receive some, some comment and guidance here so we can move forward. So, with that, I, well, we'll start the presentation in one second, but I guess, yeah. There we go. So, it is a very long presentation for anyone that tried to open it, but the actual presentation is just the first section, and then the rest is reference materials for questions and things. So, so the vast majority of it is not something that will be part of the initial presentation itself, so. There we go. Okay, so we'll just get started with this and then, and then go from there. So, as you know, the Lake County Air Quality Management District, we're proposing some changes. These are, your, our fee rule is over 30 years old. Last time it was fully adjusted. We adopted a burn permit fee in 2003, and that is the, other than CPI, that's the only adjustments we've had in, since 1996. What we're proposing right now is a major structural change to our fee rule because our fees are, it's the same structure that's been in place since 1975, and it is not clear and constant, people are constantly questioning where they fall, what's the, you know, what permit category do they fall into? So, we tried to come up with a way to make that extremely clear. Anyone can look at our fees table and determine what their fees are. So, that's what this is, is a, a major change and major update. Of course, the workshops and hearing is intended to comply with Health and Safety Code 42311. And where we propose, you know, this is all part of that, Health and Safety Code. We have to propose the rule, do a presentation, accept public comment, and receive direction from the Board prior to developing a final draft, which then gets reviewed by the state, by EPA, and then comes back to this Board for a final review and consideration. So, we'll start off with, we're starting off in the rules, and this is just in, by number order of the rules that we're proposing to change this year. Rule 208.2, this is, it's tied to 226.5, which we'll go into next, but this comes first, so we're, we're doing this one first. And this, we're making a slight change to add a correct reference to the agricultural burn hours, because this has burn hours, but it doesn't specify ag versus residential burning or non-ag burning. And so, we're just tying it to the, the actual rule section that has agricultural burn hours in it. And then we have a, another optional rule related to 226 where we would add, potentially add some no, some holidays, no burn days as an option to consider. So, we'll come back to that when we, as we go forward, but. So, Rule 226.5 is a, it's the definition. This is our annual burn ban. It's the, what we're proposing is to change the lifting of the annual burn ban. With the new, you know, over the last five years or so, fire hazard conditions have changed significantly, and our rule has always been tied to CalFire declaring an end to fire season. But with the change in fire hazard, we are in year-round fire season nowadays, and so CalFire will no longer be issuing that declaration ending fire season. So, we had to come up with a way to end the burn ban and without relying on that declaration anymore. So, we've been able to work with CalFire over the last few years to, but it's, it has not been a clean process, and it's been messy, and we know the public's frustrated with it. So, what we're proposing is to make a hard change and eliminate that issue so that'll no longer be a problem. So, what we have done is we looked back the last 20 years of fire season declarations, and what that, what we came up with is November 15th is the average lifting of the burn ban over the last 20 years. And so, a complete equivalent rule would be to end fire season, the air district's burn ban on November 15th. We don't end fire season. Sorry for, I'm just so used to saying that with the lifting of our burn ban. We don't, so we would end our burn ban on November 15th. Now, as an alternate, we, we think November 1st is a very reasonable way to go, but we would have to have an offset to do that. And one offset, the, the primary offset that we would propose for this Board would be to make specific holidays designated no burn days. Because certain holidays, people are with family, there's lots of community events, lots of people out and about doing things together, and those days are the days when smoke impacts are probably the most harmful and most impactful to the community. So, so that's, that's our proposal to do a November 1st change would be to make specific, you know, certain specific holidays, no burn days. So, we'll keep going, and then we'll, we'll come back to questions because I know there will probably be some. Rule 433.5, this rule is specific to residential exemption burn permits. So, this allows us to issue a burn permit for lots that are less than one acre where there is no other feasible method to get rid of material. And currently, this requires a Fire Chief sign-off. And because Fire Chiefs are no longer issuing permits, we've been provided with that, we still coordinate with them, but because they are no longer issuing burn permits, we have to, we're updating the rule to remove that requirement. There'll still be coordination on these issues, but it'll eliminate that court, that requirement so that they don't have to be signing permits and people don't have to try and get in to get those signatures in order to get a burn permit for those few cases where we do have a residential exemption permit. So, so this is just taking that, making that correction so that we eliminate too many hassles for the public. Rule 631, this rule we're actually proposing to repeal at the moment. This, this is repeal Rule 631 because it's being incorporated into the master fee table. This is a fee rule that's not within the fee structure, so we're repealing it from 631 and moving it into the, the fee rule categories so that it's actually part of the fee rule section. So, having fees scattered throughout the rulebook is not something that's easy to, to track and not ideal. So, this is Rule 660 and 662. This is the current district fee rule sections, and these are the ones adopted basically the same as they were in 1975. And what we are proposing is to basically repeal the whole fee rule section and then adopt a whole new fee rule structure, which I believe is 660 to 668. And as you've probably seen in the attachments, it is much more extensive than the current version. There are a lot of changes and a lot of modifications being proposed. So, it's, it's, basically, it would mean nothing to do a strike-through underlying version because we're basically wiping everything out and starting over, except for the introductory, introduction is basically the only thing that really is staying the same. This also, you know, gets us much closer to a cost recovery, you know, full cost recovery. Right now, we are, we were, you know, just doing rough calculations. We're probably at 50 to 60% cost recovery on the permit programs, so, which means we're using reserves, grants, other things to offset and a lot of salary savings from the short staffing we've had for the last five-plus years, so. Proposed, proposed fee rules are based on actual staff time. We evaluated each, each type of facility, how long it takes to issue permits, performance inspections, emissions, due reporting. We have lots of state and federal mandates, all of which are unfunded, and they are unfunded because the state legislature passes laws and says districts have fee authority, therefore adopt a fee to pay for it. And so, we haven't had to do that. We've been able to avoid that for, well, since I've been here, over 25 years. But we've gotten to the point where we're just, we're not able to sustain that with the costs increasing so much in the last few years, staffing costs increasing and, and the need for additional staffing just to keep up with all the state mandates. We just, we have to do a fee increase in order to, to survive and to meet all of the actual mandates that we have, much less to provide the customer service that the public expects. So, some of the fee, you know, we, some of the things that we're adding, we've also split out emission fees from permitting, so that we're calling them emission fees. They are, it's, these are fees that are based on the things that are impacted by the emissions from sources, so we, we have to do air monitoring. We have a lot of inspections, community issues that relate to sources that are not directly related to the permit for that source. And as we are strictly a fee-based entity, we have to cover our, the permitting. And as we are strictly a fee-based entity, we have to cover our, the permitting cost plus all the district overhead and all the things that go into all the mandates that relate to air emissions from sources. So, so the emission fees. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so how, what was, went into the fee studies?
That went, yeah, I mean, we, we looked at staff time for every single type of facility. How, yeah, this, basically, this total staff time between, you know, with four or five staff, what each, we, each person, each level of review, each level of staffing category, and, and all the work that goes with that. So, I, I don't know, I, what kind of detail are you, you asking?
Well, I just wanted to put that on the record, because you're self-funded.
Right.
And you have to, the fees have to cover all of your time. And so that is how you came up with these fees, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And the, the helpful thing was that, just to be aware, with, contracting with Mendocino County, they were doing a fee study with a consultant at the same time, so I was able to take what they were doing and kind of model what we were doing based on the work that Mendocino was paying thirty thousand dollars for. So, so we saved a significant amount of money from just being able to follow that process that, because I was working with them at the same time and monitoring it as well. So. So emission fees, these are based, you know, like I said, in monitoring and other, other things, and this also provides us a method to incentivize cleaner technologies. Because cleaner technologies require less monitoring, less impact, which means fewer complaints, fewer inspections are going to be required. So, the cleaner, some, you know, if someone invests a little bit extra in a better cleaner engine or something, their cost, their annual permitting cost is going to be lower. So this is a way to do that without, and balance that, that cleaner technology, because the, the cost can be significant. So. We're also proposing to include SEQA review fees, pre-application reviews, indirect source rule fees, and a number of other additional administrative and pass-through fees. So, so there are a lot of things that we do that have been absorbed as part of our processes, and they are not funded at the moment. And so this would provide that funding. We spend a lot of time with SEQA, and there's no way to fund that. It's been an extra thing that we just don't, haven't charged for in the past. So, we've looked at SEQA review fees, but, you know, to pass a SEQA review fee without doing the whole fee schedule, it's a lot of work for a little bit of money. So, so we're including it now because we're doing this, the giant fee revision. So. Okay, so rule update.
One thousand and two.
Is it one thousand and two?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought it was. Okay. It might be one thousand and three. But, might be a typo. So this is the rule that lists the agencies that issue burn permits, and as the Fire Chiefs Association is, has sent us a letter saying that they're no longer participating in issuance of burn permits as of this last burn season. What we're proposing is to remove that list and then enable, we're changing that regulations so that should there be a desire to come back into the permitting, we have a method that we don't have to recreate the process and update all the agency names and stuff. We can just come to an agreement on an annual basis to say, you want to issue permits, and we'll negotiate an agreement and, and go forward. So, we're trying to simplify that process, so it's a simple, almost a minor MOU-type agreement instead of a full rule change update. So. So that's what this is doing, is taking that list out. The list was outdated anyway, so some of the agency's names did not match what they were anymore, so it needed to be updated. So. Rule eleven-oh-five, this is the rule that's for agricultural burning hours. This rule we're proposing as a clarification, because we're dealing with a couple of the other issues. This was, the intent of the rule that was adopted thirty years ago was to set agricultural burn hours as regular, you know, so regular nine to three hours, extended burn days, and then we have overnight and other special cases. But extended burn days were not specifically listed, even though the intent of the extended burn days was for agricultural operations. So we're just adding that into this rule and making it clear as to what those burn hours actually are, and defining extended burn days so that it's, it's clear and anyone can follow it. So. And then, these two rules, these are part of our Title V program, which is major source permits, which have to be, you know, they go through EPA, there's, it's like a, there's a few facilities that may become Title V in the future here, but at the moment, we have no Title V sources, and these are rules that EPA has repealed. And when we adopted our rules, they were part of the federal requirement to adopt those rule sections. So EPA repealed them and said we can't use them. So they, they sent us a letter last year saying we have two years to repeal them. So we're proposing to repeal them and come into compliance. So. And so with that, that, that is the, the overview of what is being proposed, and then we can go into as much detail as you would like, and then get direction on what you would like to see for the burn ban lifting requirement, November fifteenth, November first, and what kind of offsets, or if you want to do November first, what you would like to see, or if you'd like us to go forward with some other idea. So.
Vice Chair.
How many, if we were to go with the November first, when you said certain holidays, how many are we talking about that you have to take out to make up for that? Is it a equal number of days, or?
No, we were, we think we can propose less than half. So what we were looking at was like Thanksgiving Day, Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, I think New Year's Eve and New Year's Day, and then Easter, and there may, there may be. I have it.
Right here.
Okay.
Two-oh-eight-two.
Yeah. So, here we go. So the holidays would be, okay, so we had Veterans Day, Thanksgiving Day, Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, New Year's Eve, New Year's Day, Martin Luther King Day, President's Day, and Easter. So.
And you would have to?
But we, I mean, that, that was just the list of what we thought, just because that's.
Would we have to remove all of those to start on November first? Or is there any?
There's.
Leeway to maybe take some out and not others?
Yeah, I, there, there's some leeway. We have to, we have to make a argument for equivalency, and so at the beginning of the burn season, not everyone has permits, so there is some flexibility that we can argue. But we do believe that there, you know, holidays, some sort of, you know, would be a good day to say, you know, because of the family events, but which holidays and stuff? I, I just gave you a specific list, so.
Right, which, on that list, I see a lot of them where people probably wouldn't burn anyway on Christmas and Thanksgiving, because they're doing other stuff.
Right.
Some of the other holidays where they might be off work, where they might try to take an opportunity.
Right.
So that's why I was wondering if we had any leeway with.
Yeah, yeah.
The amount of holidays we're going to take out. I'm not opposed to starting it earlier to give people more chance to get burning done that we need to get done, so.
Yeah. And that's kind of what we were thinking on some of those holidays, is that the impact to the community would be minimal for the, those that need to burn. That there are very few, especially ag and prescribed burners that would be burning on holidays. So it, it's just a few residential burners that would be impacted and, on most of the holidays themselves.
Yeah, and then my other question was on the, I wasn't really able to tell, but do we have a, so the fees haven't gone up in a long time. Do we have a, a number of a percentage-wise, how much jump would, would be on some of those fees?
Okay, yeah, the, the fees have gone up by CPI most years, so, so they have increased. But since nineteen ninety-six, CPI has, let's see, that CPI has gone up one hundred and twenty-two percent, and what we're proposing like for geothermal power, I grabbed a couple big ones because they would be the most obvious. Geothermal power plants, what we're proposing would be a total of a seventy-five percent increase from nineteen ninety-six. So, we're still below what even CPI is from ninety-six.
Okay.
So. You know, that's, that's kind of a, to give you a scale, some facilities, gas stations will go up more because they've been undercharged for many years. The amount of staff time involved with gas stations is significant, and the, the fees that were charged were very low. So, so there are some cases where the fees will go up a lot more, but we are on the authority to construct and permit to operate renewal fees. We are capped at fifteen percent. So they won't see that increase in a one year. That increase for any existing facility that currently holds their permit and just is renewing it will be capped at fifteen percent.
Okay, thank you.
So it may be a number of years before.
Supervisor Pyska.
Well, I'm in favor of more burn days, if we have to take holidays off, because that's essentially, if we start November first, we have a few more burn days than if we started on November fifteenth. And I would like to see a side-by-side analysis of the fees, because you kind of have to jump around a lot to see what the impact is. So I mean, when you come back for that, so we can see what the increase is or what CPI, and if there's a big increase or it's spread out over years, just an annotation so that it's clear to us and the public.
Okay.
Supervisor Spatia.
I, I was just gonna say that, that was a, we were looking at doing that, but it was so challenging because of this structural change is such a significant difference that trying to come up with, you know, which things are most important and which ones to compare would be.
I can see how that's gonna be challenging, but.
We can work on that.
I'm sure you'll figure it out.
Yeah, we'll work on it.
Supervisor Spatia, and then Supervisor Owen.
I appreciate that last comment from Supervisor Pyska. Yeah, going back and forth, the whole thing, the categories don't fit the new categories. It's still category A, but it's no longer the same thing. So I would like to see a side-by-side. I would like to know, can this be split up in multiple years of increases rather than one fell swoop of increase?
I was gonna say that.
Just because it's, it, I'm a little confused also to what you said. You said, in comparison to nineteen ninety-six, it's less than the CPI, but the CPI has been increasing. So are you saying that it's actually a decrease in comparison for geothermal, as you were using as an example, that they're going to see a decrease in their cost? Because that, that, that's kind of what I got from your comment, was in comparison to nineteen ninety-six, because in comparison to what it is as of now, currently on our fee structure, they're still looking at a significant increase.
Right, yeah, since, from nineteen ninety-six, not every CPI adjustment was done.
And, and.
I mean, they, they most, a lot of them have been done, but I, I don't know what the history is, but just doing the quick look at CPI, we haven't kept up with CPI.
And I'm just looking at the difference between what it costs today versus what it's going to cost tomorrow, and, and I, I agree with the side-by-side, a demolition to a demolition, a, a gas station to a gas station. I, I have concerns in your split. You have a split where this is what it costs for a permit, and this is what it costs for the continuous use. There's got to be a carrot somewhere in there. If you're using it exactly as you're supposed to and you're meeting the regulations of what has been expected of you, and you're not going above and beyond what you are permitted for, what is the carrot for doing things right? And obviously, there's a potential stick for if you do things wrong. I don't see any of that embedded, other than it's a continuous fee. You continuously have to pay to be inspected and looked at, but I'm trying to figure out how do we embed carrots to get people to follow the rules, and then they have less of a burden because they're following the rules, rather than just the intrinsic value of following the rules? Because again, we're, we're just continuously asking for more and more money. Fees are always increasing because it's the easiest way for us to balance budgets, but at the same time, it all trickles down to business development, economic development, housing development, all things that we struggle with. And this concerns me on the impacts. I know it's needed, I don't want to say that it can't happen, but I would love to see that side-by-side, and I would love to better understand what kind of timeline can we look at, and what kind of impact is this gonna have? And November first, yes.
Supervisor Owen.
Yeah, I want to thank my other colleagues, because they took most of what I had to ask, that has already been asked. I too was gonna ask for the side-by-side. The burn holidays, have you had in the past complaints of anybody burning on holidays?
I have spent many New Year's Eve out dealing with violators.
Okay, so it was.
Big drunk parties with garbage.
So is it currently illegal for them to burn on holidays?
It is illegal to burn at night.
Oh, at night?
So, yeah.
Is that where Barbie, you are on fire?
At eleven o'clock at night, yeah, and dealing with illegal burners and stuff on New Year's Eve and.
Okay.
Other holidays, yeah.
Okay, that, that was already illegal, but I'm talking about legal burns.
Yeah, they're, they're legal on holidays at the moment, as long as it's an actual burn day.
And have you had complaints on that? Just curious.
We do get some periodically, so.
From people trying to, right?
It just, yeah, depends on the weather and the conditions and who's burning.
Sure, sure, and that was just a, a question. And then, you didn't, I didn't see where it stated, will it still end on May first?
Yes.
Each year, okay.
Yeah.
And I too like the idea of the November first, to give us a few more days.
We, we had a feeling that would be the case, so that's why we put that in. I would, if I.
Yes, go ahead.
Comment real quick. So the, you know, the, one of the things to consider is that in air district, we are funded by fees, so we have to charge a fee, and we're required by law to charge a fee to cover the cost of the district program and regulating industry. So, it, it's hard for us, you know, I'm, I'm, we'll look at the carrot idea and try and come up with some ways and, to deal with that, but trying to find a way that we can be, deal with the law that says there is no other funding source for us, we're precluded from most other sources that many air districts get, like the vehicle fees. Mendocino gets five hundred thousand dollars, roughly five hundred thousand for me, vehicle fees. If we could get something like that, our permit fees could be a lot lower, but we don't, so, and we were precluded by law because we're attainment from getting those. And then Prop twenty-six passed, and then they changed the law after Prop twenty-six, and so we're, we're still, the legislature acknowledged that that will never help us, the, removing that preclusion, but, but those are the things that we have to balance and have to deal with, is trying to come up with ways to fund the mandated activities. And, and I completely understand trying to get people into compliance and, you know, just say it's, it's not fun being out at midnight on New Year's Eve and looking, you know, dealing with stuff, because, you know, we're, we get those complaints, and we're out in geothermal, driving around on Christmas Day, and, you know, because it's smelling out the community, and there's, you know, it's just one of their sources, something went wrong, and, and we, we're out tracking it down to figure out who to contact and which facility and stuff. So, so it, it, trying to balance all these things and come up with ways to pay for it and keep people into compliance, our goal is to get people into compliance and keep them there.
But my question was, was that more bon, like just party fires, like campfires, though?
It, well, it was a bonfire to dispose of a bunch of green mulberries and green waste debris plus other debris that was in the fire.
Okay.
So, yeah, so it was a, it was a, a burn pile.
Oh.
That they were partying around on, yeah, so.
And mine was a orchid removal.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
So to just enhance the side-by-side analysis that we're looking at, would, could you let us know for reference, how many permits are in each category? So we know, like, if, you know, if one category only has a handful of permits, another category has a lot of permits, we can kind of understand the community impact?
Okay.
Supervisor Spatia.
Yeah, just a quick question. I'm ready to move forward today with the code changes, but would like to not send anything to the state until further analysis. I know we haven't talked about, like, coming back before that state process, so I just want to make sure and vocalize that, happy to move forward with the code, would love to have you come back before any further, anything for the fee structure.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so I will open it up to the public. Come on up and state your name for the record.
Hello again, Tom Isick again. I actually have a bit of a concern about the November first, November fifteenth date. So as I understand it, and I'm, I'm assuming I'm materially correct, but I could be completely wrong, that the CAL FIRE or the fire district decide, or has decided in the past to lift a burn ban based on some sort of research regarding to risk and safety and things of that nature, to avoid conflagration, for lack of a better term. And since that's no longer happening, if I understand you correctly, you took twenty years of data, came up with a date that was sort of the sweet spot, and maybe a variance allows you to go to November first. The, the, the date that was selected in the past was, at least to some degree. The, the, the date that was selected in the past was, at least to some degree, based on risk and safety. Now, that data of when they lift the burn ban is gonna go away and we know things are getting warmer and we already know it's a year-round fire season. So what are you gonna do in 10 years or 12 years to reassess as to whether, whether it be November 1st or November 15th, if that's still safe enough? Because you, you're gonna have to, there should be something in the ordinance, I, I believe, that says that this date needs to be reviewed every five years, every seven years to make sure it's still safe enough because it might not be. Thank you.
Go ahead.
If, if I could respond to that. The process that currently exists and that will continue to exist, we're, what will happen on November 1st, assuming that's what the board decides to go with, is that we will lift our burn ban and we'll be able to issue permits. But every day may be a no-burn day due to fire hazard conditions. So the Fire Chiefs Association, CAL FIRE, they will let us know if it's safe to burn. So we do a daily burn day evaluation and if they say, hey, it's, we want no-burn days for the next two weeks, it'll be no-burn days for fire hazard for the next two weeks until they say it's safe. So we're, we're gonna, that's already built in, right now they can do that and that'll continue to be in effect. They just have to, they just notify us and we coordinate with them on that. So, so the fire hazard is still determined by the fire agency. We don't overrule them and there's a, there's a process in place.
All right. Any other public comment? I want to have Chief Pat.
I do have one when they're done.
Yeah, I want to make sure to get...
Good morning, Patrick Raitz, Lakeport Fire Protection District Fire Chief. Before I go on with my comments, I have a question that I'd like a clarification on because I didn't hear a true answer, and that is, who conducted your fee study? Was it done inside or was it done outside?
It was done inside.
It was done inside?
Yeah.
Because we're currently going through a fee study and we're, we can't adjust our rates without a NEXUS study. And in doing our research, we found that doing an internal study was not feasible for a lot of reasons, but it also doesn't hold up in, in, in court. It will be soundly rejected, that we had to use an outside third party, independent to do our fee study for our fees to hold up in court if they were ever challenged. So I would want to bring that attention to the board, that an internal fee study may not stand if it is challenged because you're not using sources that may or may not be qualified. There's a whole lot of things that go into that equation and I'm not challenging your qualifications to do your own fee study. What I'm challenging is, is that what I was instructed, because we're currently going through a fee study as well and wrapping that up, and we just got done doing that NEXUS study this last year on our ambulance, not only our ambulance rates, but our mitigation fees countywide, as the board is very familiar with. The next thing I would like to talk about is I have some serious concerns over burn days and burn permits and issuing. You want to rate, you're suggesting that we're going to increase burn permit fees to $60 and there's no doubt that we need to adjust. I'm not arguing what the rates should or shouldn't be. I want to just call the attention to the board that the last two years, we've received numerous complaints of folks that have not been able to get their permits, that the agency has been, air quality has been non-responsive to phone calls, their gates have been locked, their doors have been locked, they're not keeping normal office hours, and so on and so forth. We have a population in this county that is not computer savvy or does not have access to be able to get their permits online and the agency has not been cooperative or forthcoming in allowing people to get their permits. And these are people who have been getting permits for years and they come into our office frustrated, upset, and there's not a thing we can do except to send them back to air quality and to also send them to their local supervisor. So I just want to call the attention to the customer service. It was brought up in your discussion, understanding that you are fee-supported and I would expect that if you're going to increase our fees to come into the year 2025 as we need to, no argument there, but that we could see a corresponding increase back to normal when it comes to customer service and being responsive to issuing burn permits to our folks. We have a lot of fuel out there and this isn't helping when we can't get these piles burned because if you drive around the county right now, we have a lot of piles that didn't get burned before May 1st. These are not new piles that just started after May 1st. These are piles that were never burned for whatever reason, whether they could get permits, couldn't get permits, didn't have labor, don't have time, don't have water, so on and so forth. So I want to just call your attention, there's a lot of fuel out there. And then lastly, I do want to compliment the county and I want to compliment your agency because I remember seeing a press release not that long ago that we were in the top 25 counties of the United States for having clean air. And I want to commend you for that, but at the same time, I need to get some air dirty because we gotta get some fuel burn up out there and it is contributing to our fire problem and that is going to contribute to the spread of fire. So thank you very much for your time. Have a great day.
Thank you, Pat. Chief Pat, sorry. Chief Paul?
Paul Duncan, CAL FIRE. So I want to thank Doug just for reading this ordinance and all the work that went into it, so thank you very much. That's, that's some, some serious work and it's been needed updating for a bit, so thank you. And I did want to add, so just kind of to Tom's comment that what about if there's fire hazard days and we still are allowing burning? Doug works really close with us, just like we do with Doug. If we have some day that's a red flag in January, that we are able to not allow burning on that day just for fire safety. So not only do they take the air quality into account, they also take the fire hazard into account. So that's, so we do, Tom, we do that already. The $60 residential burn permit does have me concerned a little bit just because of the jump and we do want to encourage burning for our residents because that's, we have a lot of lots, we have a lot of debris, as Pat said, built up on them, so we really want to eliminate those before fire season. So maybe an incremental increase in that would be something to look at just so they're not shocked with a $60 fee from a $20 fee. That's it, thank you.
Any other public input? Hang on, Zoom, I'll bring it back to the board and I know that Supervisor Owen was first, then Supervisor Sabatier.
In the past, as I recall, it was after the first good rains is when you opened up your burn? Is that, it wasn't a date, it was rather when we got somewhat? Is that correct?
Historically, CAL FIRE would end fire season after two inches of rain.
Two inches?
That was historic.
Yeah.
That's been a long time, but now it's a, quite a different process for them, so they'll have to...
Oh, okay. So is, would, what do you, I mean, like if we get early rains, like, and we get some pretty good early rains, as we have seen occasionally in September, early October, would that cut out then we still have to wait till November? What I'm asking is it, you know, would that affect us?
That, that would go into the, the process that we have currently, which is an exemption process. So once CAL FIRE determines that the high fire conditions are over so that they, some burning can occur, then we have an exemption process which still requires, they can come to us if they have a need to burn and then they get the fire department to say it's fire-safe and then we can issue a permit and they can do burning in that time window. But it requires a need and fire safety determination from the fire agency.
So if we get some early rains, that, that would still be a possibility? Okay, okay, thank you.
And that, that exists now and that exists after May 1st too, so.
Okay.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Those are special permits, so.
Yeah.
It's not for any...
It's for need, yeah.
Thank you, just real quick, I, I have detailed questions on the new fees, but I'm waiting for that side-by-side because I too have certain concerns. We want to, we want these fees to be conducive to people following the rules and getting these things accomplished and not drive people away from participating in some of the things that we want them to participate in. I did ask Mr. Gerhart for his fee study, where we do our fee studies internally at the county. I can't speak if that's an exact replica of how the process works for air quality control, for the fact that air quality is this hybrid state-county model, while I think the fire districts have specific rules and regulations of how their NEXUS studies need to be done based by legislative action. So I appreciate that I've received that. I hope that others can ask for that because it's, should be public information to know how you got to those fees. And I'm gonna stop right there.
So.
Go ahead.
Just a quick, yeah, we will make that available, it just, it needed some cleanup, you know, because that is a working document and not quite available or ready for public release with, you know, issues in it still that need to be cleared or cleared out and cleaned up. As for the fee study requirement, the district actually isn't required to do a fee study. That's just, you know, board direction for any fee increase to do an evaluation. So we're not actually required to, all we, under Health and Safety Code, it is we come to the board with a new fee and the board can adopt it or not. So it, it doesn't require study, it doesn't require anything. So rules are, and regulations are a little different and, I mean, even different from the county's process. But just as a note, you know, we issued, was it five? 2019 permits this year, burn permits this year, and it was 1,900 last year. So, you know, we saw a significant increase in just burn permits in, in this, this year. And we probably issued 200 or 300 over the phone, helping people who needed help. So the, the, most of the calls that we received were in the first few weeks of the burn season where we were still trying to get the system up and running and there were a lot of issues with AT&amp;T, of course, taking out the whole South Main Street phone system and, so there were a lot of communication issues during that early part of the burn season, which created a lot of hassle. So we were issuing a lot of, helping a lot of people by email as well during that time just to get past the phone issues and by cellphone, so.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yeah, and I just want to point out that it was confusing with the change in CAL FIRE, CAL FIRE's declaration. And so working with you and the board, we wanted to make sure that we were changing the rules so that it's easier, so the public can get their burn permits faster. So we've got a new online system and now we've got new rules, so there's clarity. So as difficult as it was this last year, this is progress. So I appreciate you bringing this to us, but let's move quickly on adopting these rules so that we don't have any more issues in the fall. And, you know, you did bring this to us much sooner than I expected, so thank you.
It's been in the works for a couple of years, building it, so.
Good job, yeah. So hopefully, we will have a much smoother November 1st this year and a lot easier for the public to get their burn permits and get on their way as soon as we get the rain.
So it looks like, do you have the direction you need?
Have a couple of questions still.
Okay.
First is one, trying to, we would much rather bring all of these rules together because it create, if we, if we submit the burn rules without the fee rule, then we have to do the fee rule separately. We're creating two separate tracks of equivalency of work where if we can get the fee rule back to you fairly soon and still meet all their timelines, is that acceptable? And then if something delays it at that point, then we'll move forward with the...
What's your expected timeline?
I, a few weeks, so, you know, we can get it, you know, hopefully in early July, we can have the draft back to you.
I'm good with that.
Would be, would be my goal.
Works for me.
You have three or four people shaking their heads, so you're good to go.
Because the, the amount of work to, to go through the rural adoption process with the state and EPA is significant, so we'd much rather send it all as one packet because we have to send, you know, a full packet and reports and all sorts of stuff, so.
Was there another one too, you said?
The other question was, you know, so we want November 1st, do you want?
Yeah.
What holidays or do you want the full list or what would you like us to proceed with?
I think the full list would help, right?
What's the minimum number of days that you have to have on there as holidays?
Whatever the state and EPA will accept. So this has to go to them for equivalency and we have to be able to prove to them equivalency, so. I, I don't know what they will accept, so.
I just think Easter, if we can get rid of Easter, that would be fine. So many people don't celebrate that and it's getting to the end of burn season.
Yeah, Easter Sunday isn't always in burn season and so, but, you know, if it's like the last day of burn season and you have all the Easter events out, that's why we're thinking that it would only be occasionally in.
But here like this, where it's like, ooh, we're getting to the end of burn season, we need to burn.
Yeah.
Because a lot of people, and especially on bigger properties and stuff, you know, a lot of these holidays, that's when people are off and they can do it for themselves. So I would say the minimum that we need.
And, and what we can do, we, with the no-burn days, that would be for general burning. We can still issue an exemption on people that have big properties that are out away and there's no impact in the community, so we can do an exemption for specific cases where there's big burns that need to happen.
Well, this would be...
Without, outside of where there would be a potential...
I'm talking the, the general public, you know, if they're not working, if they have the weekend off or they have the holiday off, I mean, they might want to get some work done at home, especially if it's nice enough weather.
Yeah, but we're, yeah, you have to remember what we're, we're balancing the community impact from the smoke, so you have the individual doing the burning that wants to burning, but then you also have the community impact and the health of the reality. So you have to balance those things.
Well, I just, that's my own personal is the, the minimum.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Just last thing, I apologize. Here on Prop, proposed 226.5, I'll skip the first sentence because that's the November 1st, but "In the event that fire meteorological conditions in the air basin warrant, the Lake County Board of Supervisors or Lake County Air Quality Management District Board of Directors may request the district declare no burn days." I'm feeling awkward about that, that we would have to have a meeting on a Tuesday to tell you not to do a burn day, so that's never gonna happen, but Lake Fire, Lake County Fire Districts or CAL FIRE is not there, should they be added to that list since you just told us that in coordination with them, that that's how you will decide what no-burn days are, or is that like already in the general form of things?
That's already in the general. That's part of the burn day decision process, that's a state issue. It doesn't have to be in our specific rules, so that's already exists in, in law. So this just enables, so like if there's a major fire in Napa County and it's really dangerous up here, but all the, everyone's dealing with that issue down there, so there's no one to call and make a burn decision and say, "Don't burn up here." The board could come together and say, "Hey, let's make it no-burn days because everyone is swamped with this other thing." So it's in those rare cases where there'd be an emergency that you would need to or want to deal with something.
Okay, thank you.
I think what I was trying to say earlier was the reality is if we don't get a lot of this vegetation out of the way, we will have a lot of smoke happening anyhow because we'll, you know, the fires, so. Anyhow, I think we answered your questions, we're good to go? All right, so we will come back when you are ready with the other...
We will get that moving.
Material and we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I thought you turned on your...
We heard it, I did.
Okay.
But I heard something else. If I may, Chair.
Yes.
Maria has a brief presentation she'd be willing to do before lunch because we do have a 1 o'clock time certain. And I also recommend that should it have budget implications, it's then re-presented during our budget hearings under her department.
Okay. So it's at that time anyhow, so if you're ready to come up, we're gonna do 6.6. six.[493.00]
Oh my God, dude, this is really.
Come on the dot.
All right. Good morning, everyone. We got.
What's that?
Internet. I think we're good. You have to be.
I'm good.
All right, so good morning, everyone, for the June 10th, 2025, regular Board of Supervisors meeting. We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order here, and we'll start off with a moment of silence. Does anybody have Supervisor Sabatier? You want to go ahead and start off?
So an unfortunate event occurred over the weekend. The majority of the community has come to be aware of this. Unfortunately, during a summer trip outing to Hidden Valley Lake, a 14-year-old who resides in the city of Clear Lake, Andrew Roberts, went missing and eventually was found drowned and deceased. I don't want to go into any specific details. There's still more investigation going to get more information, but this has been huge for Kanakda Unified School District. He was at my wife's school. Her staff is going through a lot of difficult times right now. A lot of his friends and his classmates are going through some difficult times, and I think it was shocking as a whole to the entire community that this has happened to a young individual, just doing what we all do every single day, trying to enjoy our lives and have a wonderful day in summer when it's hot out there. So please think of Andrew Roberts today, think of his family and all the people that has impacted him, and very thankful for those that went out, the search and rescue, looking for him. This was a countywide effort to try and find him, and unfortunately, the worst possible outcome is the outcome of this. But I'd like to think of Andrew Roberts today for a moment of silence.
Chief Duncan, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did I have him do it last time? I don't remember if I had him do it last time. Did I have him do it last time? I don't remember. I did. Oops. Sorry about that, chief. All right, so we have item four, consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda. Do we have any of those? We do?
No, we do not.
Okay, you shook your head yes, so I was like, oh goodness. Consent agenda, we'll move on to item five, which is the consent agenda, and as you know, consent agenda items are usually non-controversial. We usually pass them in one swoop, one vote. However, if there is a further discussion that anyone wants to have from the board, they can pull it, and so can anyone from the public, and it looks like I have three already, 5.4, 5.6, and 5.11 that need to be pulled. Are there any others? All right, so I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone that'd like to pull an item from the consent agenda? No hands in Zoom. All right, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, move to approve the consent agenda as proposed, with the exceptions of 5.4, 5.6, and 5.11.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Five zero zero. We will now move on. Consideration of presentation of analysis for workforce and infrastructure options, and we have registrar voters, Maria Valades. You guys know it's logs on a fire sometimes. With Doug. Yes. Twenty more minutes, and then it's afternoon.
Good morning, Maria Valades, registrar voters. So. The board had asked for some monetary figures for some of the stuff that I had proposed at my last presentation, so I wanted to bring that forward to you, and then I'm going to ask for a board recommendation on a couple of items. So for staffing, again, I'm going to go back to the staffing part of it because I feel that having permanent staffing in our office and increasing one of my, reclassifying one of my positions is going to better suit our department. I've provided an estimate, the reclassification of one election assistant senior to a staff services analyst, the initial annual increase is little under $3,000. The addition of a one-part-time permanent employee, that would be the initial annual cost, of course, with increases per the five-year steps. And then additional of three extra help positions during the election cycle. I had initially put this in my submission for my budget, so that is part of my budget presentation that I'll be doing on the 24th. And as you could see for the step, for the reclass, the current reclass, the election specialist is already at step five, so they would have to be coming in as a step two, which is that 5% increase. And this shows pre-negotiation hourly rates. So I am asking the board for approval of the staff reclassification, adding the one part-time permanent staff, and the three additional extra help positions, you know, hopefully that I'm able to fill those. That's, extra help is really hard to fill in a department like mine because people want stability and, you know, they want me to guarantee more than on-call here and there, a couple hours today, a couple hours tomorrow. That's a struggle. We recently looked at 20-something applications. Most of them want permanent and full-time position, so, you know, I can't guarantee that. I can only guarantee election cycle, and even then, it's not consistent. There's no consistency in what I can offer. Temporary building suggestions were that we look into other buildings to move part of our election processes to another building. After researching, we determined that if we had to move any part of our operation, asking to reserve the board chambers, and I have it in my, the other attachment, but we're looking at when we would need it, would be Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Obviously, the board has meetings every Tuesday, and I'd have to look at the Thursdays because I know the planning commissioner also has meetings on those days. So we would try to work in, and it wouldn't be the 29 days before the election and the 30 days after the election. It would probably be about two weeks before the election and about two weeks after the election because that's when we have the most, the bulk of the ballots that we receive, so we would be opening those. The, we looked into leasing a portable modular unit that maybe if we could acquire the parking lot next to our office, but that cost is, it's too high for a one-to-eight month. Those are the, the numbers there is a one-to-eight month rental, setting it on a, and we would have to acquire the parking lot that's next to our office, which we haven't been able to, to get. So plus permitting and other step that would have to go into that portable, you know, electricity network, it'd be a lot of work. Currently, the Silvera Community Center is not available. They're looking at modifications on the building. They're doing a lot of remodeling, and then in addition, there's more people than just us that would have access to that building even during that time. I think they use it as a storage facility as well, so I don't think that would be the best move. So if we had to go with an option, you know, it would be our option one, looking into that. But I was also asked to be, I was directed to go back to the space committee, so I've submitted that to the space committee, and I believe they meet sometime this week. So I've given them what the department needs are. You know, it's kind of a hard sell because our department is currently a little under 2,000 square feet, but we need more during election time, and for us to get bigger office or bigger space, that might not be something that would be willing to be given to us. But nonetheless, we went ahead and submitted that request to the space committee meeting. So we currently are against moving any of our processes at the moment and await for the space committee recommendation. The signature verification system was something else that the board was interested in looking at. This does require RFP process, so I would need direction from the board to come back with, or to begin an RFP process so that we can get pricing and costs. As I mentioned at the last meeting, I have a hundred, a little over $131,000 of funds that could be utilized for matching. The funds do expire on August 31st of next year, and it's a three-to-one match. So that would be how much money we have available for, for usage. Until the last meeting, we were not aware, we had asked that if we could purchase a vehicle, and we did look into it. We were made aware by Central Garage that we could do a rental of a vehicle for 261 monthly coming out of our budget. It covers up to 900 miles per month, but they don't have a van. They have an SUV, and the trucks really don't work for transporting election stuff during, you know, when it's raining and stuff. So, but that's our best option at the moment, so we'll continue using the Central Garage carpool and look into possibly doing that. So every, or in my upcoming fiscal budget, I do have $4,000 budgeted for it, so that 261 a month would cover, would be covered in that, so I would not need to ask for more money for that budget. Well, again, my conclusion is that, you know, hope that the board can approve for the reclassification of the one position, add a part-time permanent position, and the additional extra help to enhance operational efficiency. Temporary election building, I still think due to security risks, financial impact, and logistical concerns, temporary relocation of election operations is not recommended at the moment until we get feedback from the space committee. And then the signature verification system, we're all for the acquisition of one, but you know, it's going to require some space in our building because it does require about 200 square feet for it to sit there, plus the area that we would have to work around it. So, but, I mean, the board could direct me to start, begin the RFP process, and I'll gladly work with admin to, to get that going. And then the vehicle solution, again, you know, we'll continue using the carpool because that's our best option at the moment. So that concludes my information. Any questions?
Okay, on the space committee, I know that we have somebody in the county. Is it acceptable, excuse me, and I'm thinking more of a permanent solution, to move into an incorporated area, or does it need to be located here, your office in the city of Lakeport, or?
You know, I believe that the elections department should be in the county seat, but it also needs to be in an area where we have transportation for the general public. This is easily accessible right now where we're at. I mean, moving us away from Lakeport, I don't think would be in the best interest because everybody knows where, I mean, people are still coming to the courthouse even though we've been at the PG&E for a little over two years now, and, you know, just to, to move us to somewhere else, you know, I, I wouldn't want to disenfranchise any voter, knowing where we're currently at, and just moving us somewhere out of the county seat. If you come to the courthouse, they can direct them to the PG&E building, you know, if we're still in Lakeport.
Okay. Oh, and then I believe that Supervisor Sabatier had mentioned for, for the van solution to get on the books ahead of time. Is that, we have that available?
I, we are working with Central Garage.
Yeah, months, mon, you know, like you could reserve it for the next election now.
We do that. We do, we do anticipate that, but again, you know, to, it's a first-come, first-served usually for carpools, but we're going to be working.
I meant like reserving now for when you're going to need it.
We do, but again, you know, depending on who might have the vehicle, and if they ended up needing it longer, because we've done that. We've rented it for two days, and then we end up having to want, need to keep it for a third day or something like that. So, but we are going to work with Central Garage. So I'm thinking of maybe once our budget gets approved, as soon as it gets approved, then we would request that that vehicle be assigned to us for the fiscal year.
Thank you.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I think there's a Seinfeld episode about a car reservation, that's what that means, reservation. Anyways, you, you offered a couple of things. I'm perfectly fine with reviewing the reclassification. I think that you're trying to tell us that this is what you feel is the best need for your department, and so I'd love to give it a shot because the, the price tag on that is negligible, and I think that it's feasible within our means. You and I had some conversations, your extra help, you're already struggling to fill up your eight extra help, you're offering to maybe get three other extra help, that just increases the struggle to fill the 11 extra help. And then, love the extra help, I don't mean to belittle it, but it, it's, it's like herding cats in training and understanding and creating the knowledge that they know of the process, why they're doing it. If it was a part-timer, there'd be more long-term understanding and knowledge, and might even actually prove to be more efficient than multiple extra help put together. So what I would like is to see if the board is interested in just seeing what does that look like in the budget, not to approve that it has to happen, but what's possible within the budget to be able to add one part-time, full-time permanent person. And in exchange, we've talked about the signature verification, but there's certain issues that I can't get past with the signature verification, and that's the, the ongoing cost, and where are we going to find the money for that? And if you can get full-time, sorry, permanent, part-time help, that would help in that process as well as many other processes. We wouldn't have to spend $130,000. We can spend it on some other technology that you need to maintain and upgrade, but also we wouldn't have to add the impact of continuous maintenance and review of this machine to make sure it's working adequately for us. As far as the location, I mean, there's only two locations in my mind that can possibly work. I've been here helping out with the registrar voters to go through some of the ballots. It works really well in here. This was during the COVID time. And the other one, I know you said you don't want to leave Lakeport, but our town hall down in Lower Lake is, I think, a great facility with a lot of room that can make it conducive just as well as this area, and obviously, one seems much better than the other, but I just wanted to highlight that there's more than one location, but I would love to see what's possible there. Maybe just Thursday afternoons through Saturday. That way, you skip out on the potential overlap with Planning Commission. And I think Central Garage, just let's make the best of what we have currently, and let's just wait around and see if there's an absolute need for something on later. So just wanted to cover those topics.
Can, can I respond? So on us, just if we got to work at the chambers, then, you know, we're right next door, and if anybody needs to come over, it's easily, easier to come over. If we move part of our process outside of, further away from our current office, you know, then we're having to spend the time to go over there to see what's happening, whereas we could just walk across the street. If I have the more staff, and if I do, you know, have the permanent staff, my thought is to work, to during the times we need to, is just do schedule changes. You know, two people come in at six in the morning, two people come in at eight in the morning, and, you know, 10, whatever, and then we can work one shift for six hours, and then one later on for six hours. So we're there, and then, you know, we have a 12-hour workday versus six hours because it gets tiring. It's tedious work. You've seen, like you said, you've worked with us. It's hard work. It, I mean, it's, it's just a lot of work. It's a tedious job, you know, opening the ballots, balancing while you'll do it, you know, carrying, lifting stuff, and so, you know, we try not to work the ladies more than eight hours if we don't have to, the extra help, because it is a long day, and it's a lot of tedious work, and you aren't productive when you're tired. So if we can do shift changes, I mean, you know, it, we would, we could stay where we're at. We wouldn't need to move part of our process, but right now, we just, we're not keep, we don't have the capacity to be able to do those shifts because we still have to be open eight to five.
All right, so we'll open it up to the public. If there's anyone that would like to come up and speak on behalf of this item, please come up. No hands in Zoom. I'll bring it back to the board. I, I only did that because I wanted to make sure the public had a chance. I know you just answered something, but already had a statement. I didn't know if you guys wanted to.
Send my piece.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think we're going to meet with the space committee this week. We've got budgets coming up. Really concerned about budgeting this year, so I think that's the more appropriate place to have this conversation.
Okay. Go ahead, Vice Chair.
Yeah, I agree with, just in two weeks, we're going to be talking about the budget, and since I haven't seen it yet, I think I'll have more information there to explore this.
All right, with that, we'll.
So, I'm sorry. So do I include this as part of my budget presentation, or, I mean?
Steven, did you want to?
I'll be, I'll be very brief. Stephen Carter, Assistant County Administrative Officer. All of these she has submitted with her budget, but they're not in the June budget presentation for your board currently. So if it was going to be brought up, it would be needed to happen during her presentation, and then a change time of, just so you know, for the, it's not already there and you approve or not. It's not there, and she can talk about it, and we can add it in day of.
Okay, let's do so, because it sounds like that's what you want, right? And it sounds like that's what we want. All right.
Unless there's things that we just want to cancel off the list right off the bat, or I think there's things that are not necessarily related to the budget, like the use of the board chambers or things like that. I don't want to miss out on being able to create progress today by just punting it, everything to budget when there's certain things in here that are not necessarily budget-related. Like, I don't think we need a signature verification. It's not because of the budget. It's just, I think, that we have to be wise in what flexibilities we even have in the first place to pay and afford those types of things.
And on the, no, I didn't want to start any work on that signature verification at this point because it's problematic with the current staffing, and so I, you know, until we know what's going to happen there, I don't think we should spend any resources on worrying about that right now.
All right, so then, you know, you don't have to bring that.
Okay.
Yeah, and I believe, if I remember right, Ms. Maria, you weren't too and thr, too thrilled about it in the first place. You didn't recommend it.
Well, it's not that I'm not thrilled about it. It's just the thought of, you know, we're going to have to manage it. We're going to have to use it, I mean, learn to use it, and, you know, it's, what if it breaks down during the election cycle? We're, we're manually returning, verifying signatures right now. That's not going to break.
Right, and, and then I think you had also mentioned that there was a good percentage of them that are kicked out and have to be verified anyway.
So it's not that they get kicked out. It's, they, they verify up to 20% of good signature verifications, and then the 80%, we would have to manually verify anyways. And then again, the space, the space is an issue. Where, where we would put it.
We don't have to worry about it, so we're good. Anything else? Do we want to kick off real quick before we? No? No? We'll wait till budgets from, with the rest of the stuff, then.
Okay, thank you.
All right, excellent.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we are at 12. We have a, 1 o'clock. Should I read the closed session now, or should I read it when we come back? I'll read it now since we're coming back right into closed session, and it is, the 1 PM is the public employee evaluation, and that is with the Director of Public Works. Should I add a couple others just in case? Okay, so I'll read all of them. So that's the 8.1. 8.2 is public employee appointment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1. Interviews for animal control director, appointment of animal control director. 8.3, conference with legal counsel, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9. D2E1, two potential cases. 8.4, conference with labor negotiator, conference with labor negotiator A, Chief Negotiator Susan Parker, county negotiator Stephen Carter, Casey Marino, Pam Samick, and Diana Rico, and B, employee organizations LCDDA, LCDSA, LCCOA, LCEA, LCSEA, and LCSMA. So we will So we will see you after lunch at 1:00 PM or 1:01, 1:05 PM, once we get back. So. There we go. Looks like we are back on. Was there any action to be taken out of closed session?
There is no action from closed session.
All right. We will now go back to our consent agenda, items that were pulled. First is 5.4, Approved Request to Waive 900-Hour Limit for Animal Control Extra Help Employees, Leela Hallman and Kaitlyn Rosales. All right. And so we just had to fix the memo or something like that? Oh, okay. Oh, okay. So there's the fix. If you're, if you're watching from Zoom, you can see the, the memo and it has been updated, I'm pretty sure, online now. So. All right. So I'll open it up to the public. If there's anyone that would like to speak on this. Bring it back to the board for action.
Chair moved to approve the request to waive 900-hour limit for animal control extra help employees, Leela Hallman and Kaitlyn Rosales.
Second.
Ooh, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll move on to 7.2, Consideration of the Letters of Support for the City of Clear Lake's Lake Shore Drive Safety Enhancement Project Safe Streets and Roads for All SS4A Implementation Grant. Supervisor Sabatier and Supervisor Owen.
I'll keep this brief. Both of us are sponsoring this since we both have our districts within or in the city of Clear Lake. They're working on Lake Shore Drive. They're looking for any kind of letters of support in order to support their continuation of fixing their streets and upgrading their infrastructure. And this letter is here for our support in order to put it in their packet. And then that, their packet is due the 13th. And so if it's possible to get it back to them tomorrow so they can put it in there, that would be great.
And I second that.
All right. Are there any other questions? I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this? No one on Zoom? All right. I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Sidewalks downtown, move to approve the letter of support for the City of Clear Lake's grant application.
I second.
And authorize the chair to sign. I felt that.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Are we good to go for that one or should I go to a different one? I'll go to a different one. So should I? I'm going to read off the other ones that we're not going to be doing.
Yes.
Okay.
And then open to public comment and to be moved to.
All right.
Speed, time uncertain.
Got it. 7.3, Consideration and Discussion of the Public Defender Oversight Committee Membership and B, Consideration of Appointment of Committee Members. This will be moved to more than likely next week, but if not, it might be another, to be determined. Right? All right. So with that, I'm going to open it up to the public. If there's anyone that would like to comment on 7.3. I'll bring it back to the board and we will bring, we will do this another day. Closing that item, I'll read off 7.4, Consideration of Letter of Support and Authorization to Submit Proposition 47 Cohort 5 Grant Application. It's from Behavioral Health Services and Probation, and this also will be pulled to a later date. There's, I'll open it up to the public for anyone to speak on behalf of 7.4. I'll bring it back to the board for, to close this item and bring it back at a later date. 7.6, Consideration of Change Order Number One to the Construction Contract with Weeks Drilling and Pump Company for the Spring Valley Test Wells in the Amount of $133,400 and authorize the administrator to sign the contracts. This is special districts. Looks like we'll be bringing this back at a later date as well. Any other questions? And I will open it up to the public for anyone that has a comment or would like to. All right. I'll bring it back to the board and we will bring this out at another date as well. 7.7, Consideration of Resolution Granting Authority to Waive Transient Occupancy Tax, Interest and Penalties on Appeal by an Operator. This is sponsored by Treasure Tax Collector. This will be coming back at a later date as well. So I'll go ahead and open it up to the public for anyone to comment on this. So I don't have any comments. I'll bring it back to the board and we will do this at another date as well. 5.6 Behavioral Health, and this one is, Approve Amendment Number One, the, to the Agreement between the County of Lake and Fremont Hospital for Acute Inpatient Psychiatric Hospital Services and Professional Services Associated with Acute Inpatient Psychiatric Hospitalization for Fiscal Year 2425 to Increase Total Compensation by $100,000 for a New Contract Contact.
Contract.
Con, well, it says contact. So a contract maximum of $200,000 and authorize the chair to sign Behavioral Services, Health Services. And we'll open it up to the public for any comments about this being moved to a later date. And I'll bring it back to the board and we will also have this brought back at a later date. That concludes those. I will go back to.
7.5.
7.5, Department, okay, let's read that one off. And I think we have the Public Works Director here to, all right, here we go. Consideration of Resolution Adopting a List of Projects for Fiscal Year 2526, Funded by SB1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017, and Short-Term Pavement Rehabilitation and Infrastructure Plan. Public Works Director Glenn March. All right. Floor is yours.
Good afternoon Supervisor, Chair Crandall and members of the board, the supervisors. Today, what you're considering is the list of projects for, to utilize SB1 funding. Those projects are shown in the attachment. And the approach to identifying those projects have been described in the four memo. The projects fall into three categories. One is addressing the poor pavement conditions of our arterial roads, which is the Nice-Lucerne Cut Off as well as Bottle Rock Road. The second category is to address the roads within communities with the lowest PCI index. And that project, those two projects are roads in Nice as well as roads in Lucerne. Roads in Lucerne also will include some safety improvements to minimize the accidents on State Route 20 as well as Country Club Drive. The third category is bridges that are either out of service, which are two, and those short-span bridges that are, have a temporary bridge on top of them. So the bridge decks have failed. There's a temporary bridge that spans over the top of the existing bridge and creek. So we can get those back in shape.
Any questions from the board? I think Supervisor Sabatier.
Yeah, just real quick. I don't want to do this today, but I know there is an "and" to 7.5 and hoping that there's a chance in the near future for you to come back to speak to the public, not just for them to read and for us to read through the Short-Term Pavement Rehabilitation Infrastructure Plan, since today we're short on time. Just hoping that we can continue that at a later date, too.
Continue this item or?
No, no, no. The, the "and" part, the Short-Term Pavement Rehabilitation Infrastructure. Today, we're just approving the SB1 project list.
Okay.
But just wanted to say, we'd love to get further information, make sure the public's aware so that we can get their input as well.
Got it.
And today, today we're in a rush.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for breaking that down for me. I'll open it up to the public. If there's anyone that would like to comment on this.
Well, I guess, good afternoon. It's been a long day. I, I want to just point out that I support a lot of the things that we're, we're seeing now in DPW. I like the fact that we have a strategic plan to deal with roads on a systematic level. I think that's the right thing to do. I also appreciate the, getting the funding that Mr. Marsh is working on. I also think the, the systematic effort to maintain the roads and improve the overall quality and ultimately reduce the expense to the county. It's a, you can either do it right or you, and save money in the long run or you can try to do it right away and have to go back and fix it again. So trying to elevate the level of quality in the roads and, and make them last longer, I think is more of a cost-effective approach. So I do support that. The one concern I have is we need to have a better conversation on road safety. PCI Index is important. You get more pavement. That's really great. But as I think we all know, we all have our road in our districts or multiple roads in our districts that categorically aren't safe. And the list is long. And I think there's a way forward. Director Marsh needs to do what he needs to do in a systematic manner. But there's, in some cases, clear and present danger to get roads fixed. So what I would ask the board to consider so that he can do what he needs to do and the way he needs to do it, is to consider where appropriate emergency ordinances that would say, yeah, let's get that stop sign in or let's get that speed limit sign in. Let's, you know, whatever the, this, you know, the, the crosswalk or what have you. So that, do that through an emergency ordinance. When his team is able to get around to do the proper engineering and research and design, then either that, that safety feature can be removed or modified or eliminated. But in the meantime, we do have accidents. We do have people that are jumping out of the way, people getting cut off, and these are real issues. The, the TMS database that was promoted throughout the various advisory councils is, is frankly not reliable. It only articulates accidents that had a fatality or a major injury, but not major collision or, there's a lot of deficiencies. And it's not a statistical blip. So for example, our beloved notorious High Valley Road, which Mr. Marsh, I'm sure gets a plethora of information on. If you go there, TMS says there's only like three accidents in the last 10 years. But if you go to CHP and do a PRA request on the same road, it's over 30. So it, it's a, it's a very big difference. So I know my time's up, but I just encourage us to somehow factor in safety. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Crandall, Vice Chair Rasmussen and Supervisors, Margot Kambara. I understand the challenge Public Works Director March faces, needs outstrip resources. I appreciate his attempt to take a systematic approach. I have two points to make about this agenda item. First, the main criteria for projects in the short-term permanent rehabilit- oh, sorry, short-term pavement rehabilitation and infrastructure work plan are PCI or Pavement Condition Index and Funding Sources. Safety is not a factor in the pavement condition index. With respect, I suggest that short-term pavement rehabilitation and infrastructure work plan be reconsidered with road safety as a heavily weighted criterion. Some road safety issues can't be fixed by repavement. Secondly, road safety worries many in the community. At the May 22nd Planning Commission Hearing for Poverty Flats Ranches Major Use Permit, Planning Commissioners expressed deep concern about the safety of High Valley Road, the access road for the Poverty Flats project. The Commissioners considered sending a message on road safety through its decision on poverty flats permit. In response, Lake County Community Development Department Director Turner stated, quote, "The Public Works Director is going to present an updated road management plan, five-year plan, to the board within the next couple of weeks or sometime in June." So conditions of a road is an ongoing concern and is always in front of the Board of Supervisors regarding how to most effectively allocate the existing funding to maintain and repair roads. I don't think that the Planning Commission denying this project as a way to send a message to the board would be news to them, end quote. Sadly, we learned that the short-term pavement rehabilitation and infrastructure work plan does not address road safety issues as Director Turner suggested to the Planning Commission. This underscores the need to prioritize safety for county roads. If not in the short-term pavement rehabilitation and infrastructure work plan, then in another plan as a top priority. These, well, there are many county roads that are not paved. There are many county roads which are one way in, one way in and one way out. As part of our shared disaster preparedness, let's make safe roads in Lake County a priority. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I can add, next, on the 17th, I'll be bringing a letter of support for the Department of Public Works application for a Safe Streets and Roads for All Planning Grant. And it will identify, the board memorandum will identify the corridors we'll be looking at as well as other items, safety items, we'll be looking at if we are awarded the grant.
Any other public comment? We'll close public comment and bring it back to the board. Any further discussion or action?
For resolution.
Resolution's been offered.
Supervisor Owen?
Aye.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Rasmussen?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We are back to 5.11, 511. And that is, Approve Amendment Number Two to the Agreement for Medical Services in Lake County Detention Facility by and between California Forensic Medical Group Incorporated, CFMNG, and the County of Lake for an increase of 6.5% and a new base sum of $4,401,513.50 for the period of January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2025. And authorize the chair to sign. Health Services Director Anthony Arton, you have the floor.
Good evening. Usually I'm just saying good morning. Yes, this is. There we go. Okay. Okay. Good evening. Yeah, Stephen and I started work on this amendment back in December, I feel like. It's been a long time in progress. We need to go ahead and get this approved. The initial request came in around 10%. Stephen, Casey and I got to work on trying to get that down to 6.5, which is what we have before you today. We need your approval for this so we can make the payments. We're about four or five months behind on the payments to Wellpath. So we need to move forward and get this done before the end of the fiscal year. I opened it up to comments.
Supervisor Sabatier?
So the reason for pulling this, number one, it's a big ticket item. I didn't feel it needed to continue to be in, and I did not expect this meeting to go as long, but did not feel it needed to be on consent, needed to be discussed. I think 6.5% on such a large number is already a lot to ask for, especially when you look at the past 10 years and how much it has increased overall. I know that I have been a part of the, don't ask me what it stands for, but the MAC Quarterly Meeting where basically we get quarterly data regarding the jail medical. I would like to see if there's consensus to bring something back to the board to add that to our committees. I think that one Board of Supervisor should always be paying attention to what's happening in our jail medical. I think it's really important. I happened to be there because I shared interests and they started inviting me. And so I just would like to see if we can formalize that if there's approval or consent from the board to do so and bring it back at a later time to make it happen. And the other one is that Cal AIM is one of the big changes that we've slowly been trying to engage in. And I know it still talks about getting people signed up for their Medi-Cal towards their latter part of their stay. But what's known as 70% or more of those, of the inmates in our jail are pre-trial, meaning we don't know if they're going to be dismissed today. We don't know if they're going to get bailed today. And it's hard to suddenly jump and go through the application process. And I would like to make a request and maybe just ask Director Arton to take this request to Medical Services to see if we can do that right away as soon as they enter jail, get them signed up for Medi-Cal, deactivate it and then reactivate it when they leave rather than waiting to see if we can comply with the discharge parameters because people are falling through the cracks and we want to make sure that inmates being released from jail are hitting the softest landing possible to be able to succeed in their endeavors to go back into normal life. So those are my comments. I just wanted to make sure and pull it, talk about it and provide those comments.
Anything to add to that or?
Yeah. No, I will 100% take that to our group. Yeah, I think it's important to make sure that we're looking at all avenues possible to ensure that we have good quality health for our inmates and even those who are just short- short-term visitors. So I will bring that to them. In terms of CalAim, you're right, it was, it is a slow implementation. Lisa and I just sent out invites to start the committee up in July, with implementation timeline going to October 26, 26, so we should be on schedule for that. And then in terms of the contract, I hear you. I get that it's a rock and a hard place. You know, part of this is contractual inflation adjustment, and then the other part of it is, you know, they're providing medical services. And as we know, cost of LVNs, RNs, doctors are all going through the roof, as well as administrative challenges, regulatory changes, and things like that. So that's part of the other reason for the additional 2%. And, you know, we can sit there and try to fight that and keep our costs down, but it's just going to impact the other end, which is the quality of services, unfortunately. So, not a fun issue to be on, but we're doing the best that we can from Health Services in ensuring that they are providing quality care. We're in my second year now, and I've seen much improvement from myself and our team in doing the audit review for the jail medical inspections. And we just passed a policy internally to make sure that we do that in a timely manner every single year. And we have monthly meetings set up with their administrators as well, to ensure that those are happening. So we're making all the improvements that we can. And I promised you during my board eval that I would ramp up my knowledge of this, because this is an area of weakness for me, so I'm getting on it.
All right, so I'm going to open it up to the public real fast. Is there anyone on Zoom? Stephen, you're the only one in. I didn't know if you wanted to add. All right, no, I'll bring you back in. I know that you asked for a consensus. I'm not sure if you have that. Do we have a consensus for the--
I'm fine with that.
Everyone seems to be fine with what, the consensus, so.
I will work with admin to put that on our, any future agenda where it's appropriate to place it.
The approval of the 6.5, is that the--
No, the putting, making it official for a Board of Supervisor to be appointed.
Yeah, absolutely. We definitely welcome that. I mean, it's pretty much been happening anyway, so.
It's next week.
I like it. That's a good idea.
Cool, yes.
And you're doing a great job.
I'm doing my best. I'm not perfect, but--
And Mr. Chair, if there's no further comments, I move to approve Amendment Number 2 to the Agreement for Medical Services in Lake County Detention Facility by and between California Forensic Medical Group, Inc., and the County of Lake for an increase of 6.5% and a new base sum of $4,401,513.50 for the period of January 1, 2025, through December 31, 2025. An authorized chair to sign.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you very much.
Go Giants.
Go Giants. There you go. We'll go ahead. That goes, that concludes every other item except for our calendars, and I'm just going to go ahead and start off, and then whoever wants to go next can go next. Tomorrow, I have a call with ArmyCor, and then I'll also be, we have another meeting that we planned a while back to discuss with SLR about Pillsbury with the team. And then Thursday, I have a discussion with CBDG about some assistance for some of the senior centers. And then we have the AAA also on Thursday. And then Friday, I'll be going out to Lake Pillsbury to do a swear-in for one of the new board members out there. Monday, of course, my CAO meeting, and then also the Risk Reduction Authority meeting, and then also back here Tuesday for our Board of Supervisors meeting. All right, whoever wants to go next?
I'll go. Last week, I did a lot of stuff with the schools graduating, barbecue for the Clearlake High Senior Class and Parade. I was fortunate to hand out scholarships at both those high schools, several of them. What I was impressed about is the amount of local money that was given out. For example, $136,000 in Kelseyville just from local sources. So that was impressive. I also spoke at the Wine Grape Growers event on what the county's doing for agriculture last week. Went to Westside Community Park meeting. I'm arranging the speakers for the judges' breakfast in Clearlake this month. Had Northern Rural Energy last week. Will have the Land Trust this week. Did the COC meeting, my monthly meeting with City Manager. I attended the Eli Stage Historical Society Carriage House fundraisers, 100 people there, so that was a good showing. I'll have APC LTA meetings tomorrow, and then with Supervisor Pisca over to Big Valley Advisory Committee. Also, County Council will be there doing Brown Act training. Thank you. Space Committee meeting this Thursday. I'm also going to go to the Animal Control Advisory Board to help keep that, get that up to speed. And again, County Council will be helping us with Brown Act training there. Also have Behavioral Health meeting, Advisory Meeting Thursday, another fundraiser community event in Kelseyville on Thursday night. And then I'll be putting the flags out on Main Street-Lakeport for Flag Day. And then lastly, we were notified that, as a Blue Ribbon Committee member, that the revised budget has $0 for any projects that were approved for the lake or for the Blue Ribbon in '23 and '24.
Zero, Prop 4?
Zero. Well, that's a different story for, it's getting figured out now, because Prop 4 is a new. But for what was approved for '23 and '24 that hadn't been funded, that money's been removed. There's nothing there.
All right, I'll go. I just have a couple highlights from last week. I, I attended virtually the Wildfire Forest Health Task Force meeting. I decided not to go to Sacramento, so I just stayed home. One of the things that we've been hearing in the modeling from CalFire, and I did share it at a meeting last week, but the, the herbaceous fuel load on the land right now, because of three successive really wet winters, and where we are now is we have four times the fuel load that we would normally have, and it's the second highest in the last 30 years. So when Chief Tyler, who's the CalFire Director, gave his update at the Task Force meeting Friday morning, he was very concerned. So we just, you know, the season is upon us. We do know it's early and active fire season. There's already been more fires this season than normal. So it's just a reminder that we have to stay vigilant, and everyone needs to work on their defensible space. So I just wanted to pass that along, so you guys are all aware. And then yesterday, I went to Santa Rosa for Patty Poppy's Road Show. She's the CEO of PG&E, climate optimist. She had a, she was very optimistic about lots of things. I did get some time to talk with her before the event. But as she was very optimist about, optimistic about so many things, I did ask during the Q&amp;A, you know, I'm sorry, but we represent, I represent constituents in rural counties that are being crushed by high bills, and in the EV charging that you're talking about, it's not going to come to our county for a long time. We don't have the infrastructure yet. And, and she said that bills are already lower. So I don't know if any of you are feeling that, or your constituents are feeling that, or maybe we'll look over it this summer, but she said that the bills were lower and they were going to keep going lower. So I just wanted to pass that on.
I'm struggling to keep a straight face.
Yeah. So tomorrow, I know you can't make the APC. Are you making it? Okay. I think I'm not going to be able to. I've got several other things I need to do, including my NACO call and NCL monthly check-in, which already overlap. Big Valley Advisory Committee in the evening Thursday. Space Committee meeting in the morning, Fire Safe Council meeting, NACO Resilient Communities. And then we have AAA. And then I've got a graduation party for a Kelseyville graduate. Friday, I am doing the commencement address for Kelseyville High School graduation. And then Monday, I have my meeting with CAO Parker and Risk Reduction Authority.
Nope. You done? Let me do it? Okay. So there were a few things last week that I didn't get on my calendar, but I'm going to skip over those. It's been pretty busy already this week and going into next week. So yesterday, we'll just start with yesterday, I did a three-hour tour with, lost his name. Yeah, Lars Ewing. Thank you. And I had it all wrote down, but I can't find it on there. Lars Ewing of Mount Canockdy, that was a really cool tour, and did some other tours of other county-owned properties and things looking to the future and projects that they would like to get going. They're kind of in the thought process. I went from there to the Farm Bureau and met with Rebecca Parker there, and we put together, we've had a lot of concerns and issues with predators in Lake County, and they're taking livestock. It's been primarily mountain lions and coyotes, but there's other predators as well. So we put together a reporting, where you can report easy, and we'd like to have the public's input on if they've had issues with the predators and what type of predators. And there's a little questionnaire on there. So we put that together, and it's available online on the Lake County Farm Bureau webpage. Let me see. Last night, or from there, we went to a training for the Lake County South, or Lake County Fire Protection District and CalFire, and they actually came to our place, and we did a live animal training. And I'd like to thank Robert Irwin for coming out, and Chalena Marado for coming down. And we were, we're going to have a few more meetings as well for law enforcement and the fire personnel when they're dealing with emergencies, whether it be because of accidents on highways and/or with, in emergencies, emergency evacuations or something, and they're coming across animals. So many of the people that are working in these jobs have not had any time around livestock, large livestock. We focused on sheep last night, and as well as a lot of other do's and don'ts. And the meeting was supposed to be a two-hour meeting, it ended up being over three hours. We, I think they learned a lot, and I'm looking forward to the next one. It'll be a little bit before we put that together. Let me see. Tomorrow evening, I have the Lake County Chamber Mixer at Hidden Valley Lake at the Greenview Restaurant, and that will be on the Gwinoc Maha Project. So if anybody's wanting any information about that, you can still go on. I believe it hasn't closed yet for purchasing your tickets. I believe it's $25 to attend that event. I have the South County, South Deal Caltrans meeting coming up on the 12th. And I also have to speak at the Math meeting. I have a CTA Ambassador Certificate class in the middle, in Middletown at the Jazzercise. We have Father's Day on Sunday, and Lake County Farm Bureau Land, or Love of the Land Dinner at the Deener Ranch on, I believe that's also on Sunday. Thank you.
Supervisor Sabatier?
So we all got an email a while ago. I was planning to go this week, but I'm unable to go to the meeting. There was a gentleman by the name of Stephen Ferry, who is the President of the Board of the Eldorado Hills CSD, who said some fairly not-too-kind things about Lake County and a easy-to-make generalization that we unfortunately hear too often from people who are not from here. And so I was planning to go and invite him to take a tour of Lake County, not share any frustration or anger, but come and visit and get to know us, rather than talk about us. But instead, I'm going to reach out to him and have a conversation with him and see, again, if I can invite him to tour around and see what Lake County's all about, because it's easy to make, it's easy to make stereotypes of things you don't know anything about. And what he said was a little demeaning towards us in a public meeting during the CSD. I know we all received that email and looked at it and listened to the meeting, and those words were, I would say, shocking, but unfortunately, others feel very free to say some of those similar things as well. So I want to do something about that. And so planning to do that, I am skipping over a whole lot of things of what I planned to do. My schedule has kind of gone away. Tomorrow, I'll be at a graduation, so I had to cancel everything, doing judges' breakfast on Thursday, meeting with Lake County Community Foundations, having a YCCD Board meeting, and meeting with a council member on the 13th, and then donating some of my time to help Meals on Wheels to make meals on Friday. Completely forgot that it was Father's Day this weekend. That kind of came around. There was something that you mentioned. I apologize, I can't make it to the SLR meetings. I feel like I've missed a bunch of Lake Pillsbury meetings these days.
You've covered me, too, so don't worry about it.
There was something that somebody mentioned that I wanted to say, but I completely forgot, so I'm going to skip it, because it's too late.
There is something I just received from Luca. There's going to be a meeting Thursday, June 12, at 9:30, and I just RSVP'd. Congressman Thompson would like to talk to the leaders in California about some of the events that are unfolding in Los Angeles. And so he wants to talk to leaders. I already RSVP'd, so I'll be in on that call, so. I don't know if anyone else got it.
Is that a Zoom?
Yes. I think he, yeah, I don't know if you got the message or not, but--
I didn't get it, but--
Probably just asking the chairs or something like-- Yeah, it's probably just the chairs. Yeah. So just letting you know, I'll be doing that, and I'll take copious notes, so that you, so I can report it out next week. Yeah. Even if we're getting out at 9 o'clock.
Okay.
Just teasing. I wanted to see Johanna's reaction on that one. Is there anything else that anyone wants?
I forgot.
Yeah, go ahead.
Bacon Fest is on Sunday. Get your tickets.
On Father's Day?
Father's Day. It's always on Father's--
It's all on Father's Day.
What is it?
Bacon Fest in Kelseyville.
It's good. I mean--
It's fun.
Bacon's good.
Yeah.
It's good.
$40 for a ticket, and all the restaurants make all this different food with bacon in it, and then you can go around and try it all and vote on which one you like. Brad goes.
It's a lot of bacon.
Yeah. I can handle--
There's like bacon ice cream.
Oh, my goodness.
Bacon desserts. It's good. It's really fun.
Well, I don't know if we have anything else.
Can't top that.
Yeah, you got to end it with bacon. So anyhow, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Thank you again for being, for sticking with us, if you're still on Zoom. If not, we'll see you next week.